Good evening, everyone, and welcome. This is a joint meeting of the Bloomington City Council and the Bloomington Housing and Redevelopment Authority. I'd like to call the Bloomington City Council to order.
And I will call the Bloomington HRA to order.
Both organizations called to order. We do need to call the roll. Ms. Wilson, could you please call the roll of the city council?
Don't believe he's present. Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Coulter?
Present.
Councilmember Lohman?
Here.
Councilmember Martin?
Present.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Mayor Bussie?
Present. Let the record show that six of the seven members of the city council are here. We're missing councilmember Jack Baloga. I believe he's trying to work his way in, maybe fighting through some technical difficulties. Mr. Chair?
And could we have the roll call for the HRA, please?
HRA Commissioner Vicki Huken?
Present.
HRA Commissioner Cheryl Lewis?
All right, finally unmuted. Is it unmuted?
Yes, it is unmuted.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. HRA Commissioner John Olson?
Go ahead, John.
Thank you.
And HRA Chairperson Mark Thorson?
Present.
All are in attendance except for Jack Baloga, who is also a council member.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome. Thanks much for spending your evening with us tonight. We have set this up as a discussion of all things housing in the city of Bloomington, whether it's practices or policy or just an all-around discussion. It's been a while, I believe, since the city council and the HRA have sat down for a presentation and a discussion, so I think it's high time that we do this. And again, I'm looking forward to it and glad that everybody could be here and be part of this discussion this evening. I do want to recognize, in addition to our HRA members and our city council members here this evening, I know that we've got a lot of attention and interest from our state and Hennepin County Commissioners and Molly Cummings from... So there's a lot of folks I'd like to say hello to and welcome also. I know that our state senators Melissa Wickland and Melissa Franzen were planning on being here. I'm not sure if they're on yet, but I know that they were planning to be here. All of our state representatives, Representative Mike Howard, Representative Andrew Carlson, and Representative Steve Elkins are joining us this evening. Hennepin County Commissioner Debbie Gattell is with us. And our Metropolitan Council Representative Molly Cummings, former mayor of Hopkins. Good evening and welcome. Thank you all for being with us. This is an important discussion, and obviously it goes beyond just the city boundaries of the HRA. It absolutely includes our state, our regional, and our county representatives and partners in all of this. So thank you very much for being available this evening and being part of this discussion. It is greatly appreciated. We have a lengthy discussion ahead of us this evening, a good-sized PowerPoint deck that we're going to go through. And as I said, it's going to be mostly all things housing in the city of Bloomington, which I'm looking forward to. I'd like to turn it over to our interim community development director, Heather Worthington. She's going to kick us off and lead us into our discussion this evening. Good evening, Heather. Welcome. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for attending this tonight. We appreciate it. Mayor, councilmembers, and HRA commissioners, and assorted legislators, we thank you for attending tonight's study session on housing. This is the first of two workshops that we would like to have with the city council and HRA for the purpose of holistically examining the state of housing in Bloomington. This includes data, policy recommendations, including revisions to existing ordinances and policies, as well as new policies and ordinances, program evaluation and recommendations. And in our second session in September, an examination of the city's naturally occurring affordable housing, or NOA, and recommendations regarding the continued funding of the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund and utilization of those and other resources to ensure the stability and availability of NOA housing long-term. I want to particularly thank our staff in community development, who play an instrumental role in the construction and preservation of affordable housing in the city every day. Staff from our Housing and Redevelopment Authority, Port Authority, planning and assessing, building inspections, and environmental health are all involved on a day-to-day basis in ensuring that our residents have access to safe and affordable housing. The work that you do as policymakers with them is fundamental to that success. The team that you have built here in Bloomington is producing exciting results, and with your continued partnership, the future is bright for housing here in Bloomington. Finally, in the last six months, we have experienced a set of impacts on this community that few could have predicted prior to early March. This team has been able to assign resources to our community partners to provide rental assistance and social services to our residents who are facing housing displacement and eviction. We've established a small business loan program to assist businesses impacted by COVID-19, and we remain concerned about the impact of unemployment and underemployment as we move into the school year this fall. While we have navigated the past several months, more challenges will present themselves. Much of the policy work we discussed tonight can help us to positively impact the challenges ahead of us. Thank you for participating tonight. Now, I'm going to hand it over to Mike Palermo, and he is going to walk us through some of the data that will help to provide a foundation in the work ahead. And we have built-in breaks in this presentation for discussion and questions. And if possible, we would ask you to hold your questions till the break so that we can ensure that we're able to cover what will be a lot of information tonight. So thank you again for being here. And Mike, do you want to begin?
Good evening, Mr. Palermo. Thank you much for being here and council and commission members. If you could, if you could hold your questions, we, as Ms. Worthington said, we're going to get to natural breakpoints, and we'll be able to gather up all the questions and have the discussion then. So, Mr. Palermo, please lead us away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, it's all things housing. We've got quite a bit to talk through tonight, and so you can see our agenda for tonight. And next study session in September, we'll continue the discussion by talking about NOA, funding priorities, and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. But tonight, we've kind of broke down the schedule. Most of our items are five to 10 minutes, but a longer discussion for the Opportunity Housing ordinance, kind of the key component we want to be discussing. But as we've said a couple times now, we'll have natural breaks to kind of discuss through items at the end of each topic. So I will start with some data. This is to provide a context for the discussion. We've been working on collecting lots of different data points related to housing. We're working on a housing indicator report that will kind of continually update annually to kind of track trends. But we wanted to pull out some key components of that report. There's a wide variety of data that we can discuss, but we thought these jumped out to us and really provide some context. So who lives in Bloomington? To start, we have about 90,000 residents, 38,000 households. About a third of that is renter occupied, while two-thirds is owner occupied. And about a quarter of our population owns their house without a mortgage. Our average household size has decreased from 3.75 in 1970 to just 2.36 today. So most of our households are two-person households. Our foreign-born population has grown from 9,500 to 13,000 from 2010 to 2018. This is a 36% increase, and it's a large majority of our growth in the last 10 years have been foreign-born. It's not to say it was BIPOC population or Black Indigenous people of color population, but they are diverse populations that have been growing in Bloomington. So we are, when looking at our BIPOC population, Bloomington has about 82% white, non-Hispanic, with about 18% people of color or Black Indigenous people of color population. But when you look at owner versus renter, overwhelmingly, our owner population, 90% is white, non-Hispanic, whereas our renter population sees the majority of that minority population. Looking at it another way, looking at our Black population, 90% of our Black population lives in rental units, and only 10% are homeowners. Looking at Hispanic, that Hispanic number is a little deceiving because that is white Hispanic. If you look at Hispanic as a whole, as an ethnicity, it's only 33% owner, whereas 67% are renter. Looking at our age, we tend to see a little bit older than our comparative cities throughout the region. Bloomington has about 20% senior population, which is on par with the Dinah and Minnetonka. But you can see Brooklyn Park and Lakeville and Shakopee and Woodbury tend to have a lot more population under 18 than we do. We have about 19% under 18. And then where are those children living? We tend to think of families living in owner-occupied units or single-family homes, but they're throughout the community. They're in renter and owner. 24.2% of our renters are households with children, whereas 26.2% of owner population are households with children. So families are living in both renter and owner occupied. Our median income has been lagging in recent years. In 1990, we were above Hennepin County and the seven-county metro. And in 2000, we were about even, and then starting in 2010, we started to lag a little bit. We look, and we're keeping up with Hennepin County and the seven-county metro, but it's still falling behind. One thing to point out here that we want to kind of bring up later, we'll talk about area median income. This is a little bit different than area median income. The HUD creates the area median income for the region, and that has $103,400 annual income, but they create that off of family income. So family income, a family of four, they pull out specifically. So that tends to be higher. Families tend to make more, and a family of four tends to make more. They pull that out, come up with that median, and then they adjust, formulate, formulate deeply to come up with rents. Even then, it's still a formula where they are using old data and adjusting to 2020. So that's why you'll see a difference between this median income and area median income Looking at our average rent, Bloomington is pretty on par with the Twin Cities metro as a whole. We're pretty much about average for studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom. You can see we're only about $50 a month less than the Twin Cities as a whole. And our vacancy is a little bit lower at 2.4. That's pretty low. Your target usually is about 5% or 6% is a healthy vacancy rate. So the Twin Cities on the whole is low, and Bloomington's even lower. So how much does it really cost to rent one of these units? If you take those average, average per month costs and break it down to a yearly income, 30% of your income is generally accepted for housing. For one of our one-bedrooms, you would be making $45,480 a year, or almost $22 an hour. A two-bedroom is, you'd have to have an income of about $56,000 a year, or $27 an hour. And a two-bedroom is higher than our median renter income. Our median renter income is about $49,000 a year. You can see on the side here some comparable annual incomes for jobs of people who work in Bloomington. So registered nurse and accountants would be able to afford most of our units in Bloomington, whereas if you get down to nursing assistants or janitors, retail, these jobs do not pay sufficiently. If you had two people working in a household making minimum wage, you still wouldn't make enough working 80 hours a week to afford a one-bedroom. You'd have to work 89 hours a week. And this transitions into our, what we call housing cost burden. So the housing cost burden is, like I said, generally accepted. 30% of your income should, could go to housing costs. Anything over that is generally considered housing cost burden. In large metros, it tends to be closer to 40%, but the data really is available in 30% or, in some cases, 35% of household income. But you can see here, there's a stark difference between owner and renter occupied. Both cases, if you're making less than $20,000 annually, about 90% of people are going to be housing cost burdened. But that, they is elevated, even up to $35,000 annually. Still, 90% of our renter population is housing cost burdened. And then it goes down a little bit, up to $50,000. And at over $50,000 or $75,000, it decreases as you would expect. But you can see the difference here in just total households that are cost burdened. Our owner population is about 19.4%, which makes sense. Our owner population, their median income is about $90,000, whereas our renter population, our median income's only $49,000. So 43% of our renter population is considered house burdened. Overall, the city is about 27%, which is not terrible, but it's something that we are looking to address.
Did you text him?
With that, I will turn it over to Sherri Shulquist. She'll kind of sum up some of the housing data we have and take it from there.
Good evening, Ms. Shulquist. Welcome. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Bussie, Chair Thorson, councilmembers, commissioners, and additional officials. Thank you, Mike, for bringing all that data together so quickly. When we think of the housing data in Bloomington, we also want to present it in a way that we can track how we're doing each year over year. So one of the reasons for the housing indicators report that Planning, Mike Palermo, is working on is so we can track our progress under the Opportunity Housing ordinance. So we're comparing how many rental units exist with how many affordable rental units we are creating at 30, 50, and 60% AMI. We're tracking the new units, the new affordable units, the number of NOA units, the number of preserved NOA units, and any units that are lost to market rate. And we will provide more information on this data and what we know to date with the first year of the Opportunity Housing ordinance. I should go back to ask if there are any questions on any of the housing data thus far, or if I should just keep moving forward?
Any questions related to the housing data that we've heard so far? I don't see any, and I don't have the full screen. So if you have a question, if you might want to just speak up, I don't have everybody on my screen at once. So if you, if you do have a question, and I don't call...
Mr. Mayor?
There you go. Who, please?
Sorry, this is Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Councilmember Coulter. Please.
Just a quick question here. Under the third bullet point on this slide, it says affordable units, 885, but then the numbers after that don't add up to 885? Can you, the 12 at 30% AMI, 1,008 at 50, and so on? I'm just not following what that line refers to.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Coulter. What this line refers to are, thank you, this was in the notes. And in, moving quickly, I think it's important that I emphasize that the 885 includes all the subsidized and rent-restricted units in the city. So previously, 80% area median income was considered affordable and our rent-restricted units. But I additionally broke out how many we know exist at the 30, 50, and 60% AMI. Is there anything that you would like to add to that, Mike Palermo?
Yeah, that's correct. So those 885 are kind of those subsidized or rent-restricted units, whereas those other numbers are those additional units. We have a database that we have that has rents for most of the properties in Bloomington, so we have a good estimate of what those numbers are at 30%, 50%, and 60% AMI. We can use that information to come up with what those, how many units we have.
Additionally, the rental units includes licensed units, but it does not include 449 units that are provided through group homes. And it's important to note as well that when we're looking in the future, as we hopefully don't track very many, but if we do end up tracking NOA units that are lost to substantial conversion, it's easy for us to determine when there's a big jump in rent. But if it's a minor increase, it may tip a NOA project slightly over 60% AMI, and then in six or 12 months, it might be back down to being a NOA project again. So the NOA preservation unit tracking is going to be a little tricky. But that is, thank you for asking that question, Councilmember Coulter.
So, thank you. Just, sorry, just to clarify then, that 885 is, it's not related to the 12 at 30% AMI, 1,008 at 50, and so on? Those numbers, those numbers aren't supposed to add up, in other words?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson has a question. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of quick questions here. On this page, the NOA units, will we also be tracking owner-occupied affordable units? We have a number of houses within our community that people can purchase and are fairly affordable, and do we track that in any way?
The single-family homeownership and townhome situation is what you're referring to?
Correct. Any type of owner-occupied, I mean, most prevalent would be the single-family, but I'm sure there's a few other townhome condo projects, that type of thing, within the community.
Yes, Councilmember Nelson, that is information we will provide in the indicators report. Mike, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I was just going to say, we have a whole section on homeownership and tracking those trends, and our assessing division has quite a substantial breakdown of that. So it was quite easy to pull together, and we'll be providing that in that report as well.
Okay, thank you. Next question, do we have an indication of the rental percentage over time? How has that changed with more rental, with less rental? What direction is it going? Do we have that data?
Yes, please do. Councilmember Nelson, I don't have it readily available, but we haven't seen a huge shift in the last 20 years. It's obviously been picking up more renters as we are a built-out community, and so that number is just going to continue to increase. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but that has, it's been about a third renter, like I said, and it's just been slowly kind of ticking up. We're obviously in a housing, a rental housing boom now, where we have a lot of units in the pipeline, but we haven't seen a boom like that in quite some time. I think the last time really was kind of, we had a big boom in the 80s. But, so it's been kind of that two-third mix for a while.
Okay. Have we seen or do we track any shift in previously owner-occupied units that have shifted to rental, like a single-family home that maybe an investor bought and now is a rental unit as opposed to an owner-occupied unit? And do we see trends there, or do we have that data?
Councilmember Nelson, we do, we have that number. I have with our rental units, we do have it broken down by single-family homes that are renter. I don't know if we have that data, that data going back in time, but that is something that we plan to continue tracking moving forward, that we know. I think it's about 2,000 units that are single-family, that are rented out. I'm searching for that.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, go ahead.
I just, I think that'd be an important thing for us to be tracking right now, given the state of the economy. I know during the Great Recession, a number of single-family homes were bought by investors and converted. I believe that happened in our community, but I know it was kind of a nationwide trend, and it was a business model, and, you know, candidly, a bit of concern for me to take that equity away from families and that sort of thing. So, last question I have in terms of the data, there was a slide that had in-demand jobs, and I'm just curious where that information came from, just actually working in an industry that has an extreme worker shortage even now, and not seeing any of those types of jobs, like plumbers, electricians, those types of things. Just curious as to how these jobs were selected.
I can answer that question as well. This comes from the Minnesota Housing Partnership. It's a statewide advocacy group, and every year, they, every other year, they produce rental housing snapshot compared to ownership for cities, and on the opposite years, they produce them by legislative district.
Okay. Those are all my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Council commissioners, any other questions on the data? I don't see any at this time. I do want to make note that Councilmember Jack Baloga is now with us. Good evening, Jack. Welcome. So we have a full complement of both councilmembers and HRA commissioners.
Say, Mayor?
Yes.
This is Councilmember Lohman.
Councilmember Lohman.
As you probably didn't see my hand there. So just one, just two quick questions for you. So when we're looking at rental units, do we know how many of those folks that are renting in Bloomington transition from being rental into homeownership or some type of ownership property?
Councilmember Lohman, I do not have the data source that tracks that. That is something that I think is very important. That's something, you know, that's part of our community of choice, that we want people to kind of start here, and maybe that means renter, and then move into a home. Maybe it's a starter home and kind of move up. That's kind of part of our point of having many options and many choices. But I don't know of the data source that tracks that. Maybe Sherri does, and that would be definitely, if that is available, something that we would want to include.
Yeah. Councilmember Lohman, the only tool I'm aware of that would track that would be if there were some state or local funding to assist tenants that make the transition to homeownership. I know that Minnesota Housing has a fairly significant down payment and closing cost assistance program, but it's targeted to families with moderate to lower incomes. And so, you know, to the extent that data exists, it would only, likely only be available for lower, lower-income tenants. But we will certainly call David Arbid at the Minneapolis Area Association of Realtors and see if he has any, any way of tracking that data.
And then secondarily, of special interest to me, when we put together this report, will there be any parts of this report that will have anything to do with how those properties... do with how those properties, uh, themselves are sustainable? Those units, uh, the rental units are sustainable, um, energy efficient? Um, will there be any sections about that in, in the report?
Um, Councilmember Loman, since you asked, there will be. I know for the, our new, um, you know, for the new construction, especially the new construction that receives funding from Minnesota Housing, um, there's a requirement to meet the Minnesota overlay to the green communities criteria. Um, that does include sustainability and energy efficiency. So, um, that is something that we will add to the list to track.
Thank you. Any additional questions? If not, let's forge ahead, if we could.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, our, our goals under the Opportunity Housing ordinance are in line with our 2030 Met Council goals. So the total number of units is eight hundred and forty-two affordable, including four hundred and forty-five extremely low income units, two hundred and forty-six very low income units, one hundred and fifty-one low income units. And then additionally, whatever, um, units become preserved each year. And, um, we also have a market rate unit goal, which is one thousand four hundred and fifty-eight, um, between now and 2030. This is the tally to date of the opportunity housing units. Um, Lindale Flats is, provides, um, eighty-one units at sixty percent AMI. Village Club, the preservation of three hundred and six units, uh, that are somewhere between sixty and eighty percent of area median income. Village Club, the new construction, income averages at sixty percent of area median income, but provides seventeen units at thirty percent AMI, sixty at one oh four, and fifty-one at market rate. The, um, Penn Place would also include five to ten, hopefully ten, thirty percent AMI units in addition, um, to the sixty percent that would bring us sixty-eight affordable units. The Rosa Development provided thirty-seven at fifty percent AMI, and the Quinn will provide eighty-six at sixty percent AMI. So here you see our totals, um, out of the four hundred and forty-five, thirty percent AMI, we currently are planning for twenty-seven. Um, of the two, goal of two hundred and forty-six for fifty, we're at thirty-seven. And as predicted, we have already far exceeded our goal of providing sixty percent AMI units. Um, we're at three twenty-nine over a hundred and fifty-one. Um, and we're making good progress on our market rate, uh, with eight hundred and ninety-six units total. Um, I, I did the math, um, to determine that if we were to do, um, break down our goals over ten years, we would need to be producing forty-four point five thirty percent AMI units per year, uh, twenty-four point six fifty percent AMI units a year, um, fifteen sixty percent a year, and a hundred and forty-five point eight market rate units per year. Uh, focusing on the mix of bedrooms, I will not read through, um, every single project, but you'll see that the South Loop projects have more efficiencies. That probably makes sense for that market being close to the light rail and bus rapid transit. Um, there's a good mix of one bedrooms, two bedrooms, a significant number of three bedrooms, and a few four bedroom units. So, um, nineteen four bedrooms, hundred and seventeen three, and then, you know, more typical, uh, efficiency one, two, and three bedroom units. Are there any questions on the opportunity housing specific data?
I see Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have a quick question. Are we tracking the number of units that, um, are accessible to people living with disabilities who may use wheelchairs or other things like that?
Uh, Councilmember Carter, yes, we will be. Um, at this point, um, once again, projects that receive funding from the state are required to meet, um, several different criteria of accessibility that are above and beyond the state building code. So that is something, um, that we will begin to track.
Great. Um, so I'm really glad to hear that. And I would love to see us also set goals for that. And we know that there, you know, there's a growing number of seniors in our community, but we also know that people living with disabilities really struggle, um, to find housing. And we know that they live at incomes that are at poverty level. And so, um, I would hope that this could become a priority and that we could start tracking and setting goals. Thank you.
Council, other questions? If not, I have a question, Ms. Choquist. If you could just help me, help clarify some things for me, some of the numbers here we're looking at. So as we looked at on page fourteen, we talked about, uh, a number of affordable units. In bold, it was eight eighty-five. And then the discussion that Councilmember Colter brought up about, uh, twelve at thirty percent, one thousand eight at fifty percent, and so on. So those numbers were a little different. And then if you go to page sixteen, it talks about, uh, under goals, our goal is eight hundred and forty-two total affordable units. And so my question there is, have we hit that affordable unit total? And then I look on page seventeen, where I look at the subtotal of all of the different developments and the different levels, and the subtotal is eight ninety-six. So could, could you help me understand, explain to me what, what exactly, what numbers are we looking at? What numbers are the goals? And what, what are we really aiming for here with the numbers that we're talking about?
Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to clarify. Uh, so the eight hundred and forty-two are our Met Council twenty thirty goals. And so, um, those are goals that, that we develop, um, with, with Met Council. And they are reflected in the, the bottom line of the twenty thirty goals of forty-five, or four forty-five, two forty-six, one fifty-one. Um, NOA preservation is not determined. The market rate goal is determined, however. Um, and, um, so the eight hundred and forty-two is the total Met Council based goal, uh, to meet our affordable housing need, um, in, in Bloomington, um, and market rate. So the subtotals are what we have actually, um, actually have in the pipeline that's public and real. Lindale Flats, Village Club, Penn Place, Rosa, and the Quinn have all been approved by the city council and the HRA or the port. And these are numbers that are in development agreements. Um, you know, Village Club, I think, is the only one that's, that's broken ground and is under construction. Um, but that is the opportunity housing units. When I talk about the project pipeline next, we'll also be talking about other affordable housing developments that exist pre-opportunity housing, um, you know, in the, in the recent past year or two that are also, um, contributing to that number. Uh, but we made the decision to, you know, start with, with September first, twenty nineteen, um, was the starting date. And we're really looking for a baseline of data in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, um, to, to move our goals forward.
Mayor Bussey?
Commissioner Olson, good evening.
Thank you. Um, and, and Chair Thorson, both of you. Um, I'm, I'm wondering, uh, to this point, with, uh, the data that was, uh, given in tables and whatnot at the very beginning, and, uh, the recent tables that we've been looking at here in the discussion, is it, is it safe to say that we, we have our most extreme need for housing in this city are those who are fifty and lower in terms of AMI? Is that, is that an accurate summary of what we've done so far?
Uh, Commissioner Olson, yes. Those numbers are, the goals are much higher. And if you look at this chart, you'll see that we've already surpassed, if not doubled, our sixty percent AMI goals.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I will just ask one more, and it doesn't need to be answered tonight, but I think I would like to see the comparison. Uh, we're always comparing ourselves with other cities, and I would like to see where our, our neighbors here in, uh, the southwest metro stand regarding what their twenty thirty Met Council goals are and what their subtotals are in all of these categories as well. Is that, I'm assuming that's possible to put those numbers together?
Yes, yes, Mayor. We look forward to it.
Good, thank you. Council? HRA, any other questions? If not?
Uh, yeah?
Uh, yes.
Uh, this is, uh, Jack Beloga.
Councilmember Beloga, good evening, welcome.
Um, Sherry, is it typical that we would have roughly a goal of, uh, fifty percent of the number of, uh, market rate units for affordable? Is, is that how it's sort of been trending?
Uh, Councilmember Beloga, I am not certain. Um, you know, we have, when you look at, I think we expected that there would be some projects that came forward since the ordinance was, um, enacted, that would choose to take the payment in lieu and do no affordability. Well, um, that did happen, uh, at American Square with the Artur and the Quinn. The Quinn is Phase Two and is providing eighty-six affordable units that, you know, for the Quinn and Rosa, um, those very likely would not have, um, been produced as affordable had it not been for the ordinance. Where Village Club, Penn Place, Lindale Flats, those are affordable housing developers, those units, you know, would have been, um, affordable without the ordinance. So, you know, I, I may not be directly answering, responding to your question. Um, I'm, I'm searching a bit, but, um, we, we did have a significant number of projects come in wanting to, you know, meet the ordinance and, and take on some affordability. Um, other than that, our market rate goals for housing, um, you know, I would defer to, um, planning for, um, their analysis under the twenty thirty comprehensive plan. And, you know, we can add that to the list of information to bring back.
Yeah, I, I'll just jump in and say that, to kind of clarify that eight hundred forty-two number, that's based on our projected population growth. They, they allocate that based on what they, Met Council expects our population growth will be. So those are new units that we need to, uh, obtain. Um, that mix, yeah, it's kind of what just happened to come in. As Sherry explained, sometimes we got some hundred percent affordable projects, which kind of unique and we, yeah, it's kind of just what developers have come forth with.
Uh, 'cause I'm, I'm surprised at, uh, the performance, uh, to the market rate. Uh, you know, I, I know there's others on, uh, the drawing boards, and you're looking at those which, uh, have entitlements here, or so it appears to me. And, uh, you know, it's, uh, we're, we're doing great in the affordable, but not so good in the market.
Any additional questions, Councilmember Beloga?
Um, I also wanted to, you know, we have, uh, not an unlimited amount of TIF to give out. And I, I need confirmation on that, that we do have, uh, ceilings on TIF. Is that correct, Sherry?
Um, Councilmember Beloga, yes. And we are prepared to have a full TIF analysis and discussion, um, at the next study session meeting in September. Um, it's, you know, it's, we automatically think of financing and priorities when we're looking at, um, at our opportunity housing goals and performance. Uh, but we are, we did decide that to, tonight is most things housing, not all things housing. And we will, um, provide that, uh, Affordable Housing Trust Fund tax increment financing, um, and priorities with funding. Um, that discussion, as well as the NOA discussion, will happen in, at the September study session.
Excellent. Um, and then have, have we ever looked at our city, uh, just as, you know, the, the geographic body that exists, and say, looking at it through time, how many rental units could we sustain in our community? Not that are built today, but to be constructed. And I know it's, there's a lot of elasticity in that because of redevelopment, right? But it, it seems to me that, uh, if we're given targets by the Met Council, we have to look at our ability through time, um, to meet those targets in terms of, uh, land masses. Um, and I have no idea, uh, how much we can devote in terms of commercial area to, um, uh, rental housing. And because we won't turn over, I'm presuming, our single family residential areas to multifamily housing. So have I made my thoughts clear, Sherry?
Yes, Council Beloga, I've been taking notes. Um, thank you very much for raising those issues. We will, um, as a, as a staff, um, get together and, and see what additional information we're able to provide.
Great, 'cause I, I think that's a long-term planning element that we, to, uh, sort of, uh, get our arms around to look at what we're going for. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Beloga, I'll just jump in and say, these are base, those gold targets are based on our forecast, and those forecasts are based in our land capacity. So that, that discussion, that, uh, exercise has been completed. That was part of the comp plan. Um, and that, that is how that came to be. So we, we have the capacity to, uh, for those units, um, to increase. Um, so, and that's how, the, it's kind of a backwards approach. That's how that target is created through that. So, uh, I appreciate, uh, the comments. And so that, that is how we got to that eight hundred number.
Okay, so if we look going forward, uh, you know, because between the two, let's just round it, say it's two thousand. Over the next ten years, we could have twenty thousand additional, uh, rental units within the city, and we could, uh, sustain that. Is that what you said?
Um, Councilmember Beloga, where did you get twenty thousand?
Oh, I, I said, uh, if market rate is roughly fifteen hundred, and, uh, affordable is another eight hundred, let's just make it, uh, for easy math, two thousand. And if we say it's a ten-year period, that's, uh, you know, uh, twenty thousand units, right?
I, I follow you now. Yeah, and the reality is, we're gonna, it's gonna happen slow. Right now, we're in a hot period, and we'll likely cool down at some point. Um, so we, um, if you look at Met Council, they tend to smooth it out over the, the period, but we expect that we'll kind of see a cooldown at some point here. Um, and, uh, I don't have the exact number, but we, we have capacity for, uh, probably about ten thousand units at least, um, in certain areas, um, that we've kind of are expecting to target our growth. That, our development districts have kind of targeted that. And so we use a forecast tracker. Um, it's kind of an internal tool that we've created that follows potential developments. A lot of these were on our forecast tracker list that helps us kind of determine what that forecast will be. So we, we have that capacity, and we are looking in that long term for that.
Okay. Uh, that, that's great. And, uh, Mike, if you could share that data? That's great, and Mike, if you could share that data, I would really appreciate it, because even 10,000, you know, it seems like a big number over the next 10 years or so.
Yes, and Council... Sorry, Mike, go ahead.
I didn't say that, we are looking more in the 20-year period, and that's where Met Council looks at the 10, and yeah, so there's different periods, but yes. I will, I can get that information to you and where we kind of, that analysis is located.
And thank you, Mike, and Councilmember Beloga. We, you know, we will, obviously, the comp plan and the 2040 plan and the 2030 plan are their own, their own plans, but we will include in the, in the housing indicators, you know, some of this information relevant to the issues you just raised.
Thank you. I have no other questions.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Nelson's hand is up, and then we'll push forward into our presentation here.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of quick follow-up to Councilmember Beloga's questions. First, on this chart, to my, to understand, I didn't realize this at first, but it does not include the Arter, which was a fully market rate project of about 200, 250 units that they did the payment in lieu of. Is that accurate? Would that add to this market rate number?
Yes, it would, Councilmember Nelson. Thank you for raising that. We will be sure to include it as market rate in the full report. We also did not include the other projects under development, like Section, like 108 Place, the district, and, and Hayden Grove. So those are other units that are, have come online or about to come online that include affordability, but were pre-opportunity housing ordinance.
They're pre the ordinance, but they also have market rate components and affordable, so they give us a full picture.
Yes, I'm recognizing the need to fully report housing in total and not just opportunity housing units.
And just one clarification, I believe the Arter is opportunity housing, isn't it? Because they did the payment in lieu of?
Actually, technically, the payment in lieu makes them exempt. But yeah, that is something, you know, especially, that's something that we've, that is a part, that needs clarification, and will come up again in other parts of this presentation this evening.
Okay. Second quick clarification, so I make sure I understand this, but the goal numbers, the 1458 and the 842, to get to that 2,000, 2,200 number, that is, if I understand correctly, that is actually the 10-year goal. The goal by 2030, that's not an annual goal, is that right?
Right, that is the 2030 goal, and, you know, the main thing to note about this is, you know, if we produce this number of units each year, we're surpassing our market rate, we're doubled our 60% AMI, and we have a lot of work to do in the 30 and 50. Although, you know, we're making some progress there.
Okay. The last question I have is just trying to get my head around conceptually. Our ordinance says something about 9% affordable units, and yet our goal is to have about a third affordable units, and it seems like we're outperforming that goal, building even more affordable units than that. Am I understanding those numbers correctly, and how do I correlate the 9% with what we're actually building?
That is, that is a good question and a bit complex. The 9% was ba, was determined based on a economic impact study from Bay Area that was done by Bay Area Economics. And the Met Council study is done by popul, you know, among other things, I may be oversimplifying, population gross, growth and anticipated need. So they're different, they're different perspectives, and so they result in different amounts. One thing I know, hearing from Dr. Johnson, was that it was important to have an, an initial number that was based from the economic impact standpoint, not just from future projections and goals, like other cities say 20% affordable because they think that makes sense. Ours was based on today's economic impact. And so, as we'll discuss later in the presentation, that is something that the economic impact need will adjust over time as well.
Okay, so one of them is economic impact, the other one is community-based need, and they don't line up exactly the same, if I understand?
Yes, yeah, and the, I mean, we're, I'm oversimplifying the Met Council study, kind of population growth as well.
Okay, great, thank you very much for the clarification, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on, thank you much.
I apologize, I need a mouse, sometimes my keys stick. So if you've seen my screen not moving, that is why. Okay, projects in the pipeline. So this will give me an opportunity to call out, in green are the units that are produced under the ordinance. The Fenley, 402 units, 40 affordable at 80% AMI. The 108 Place is 42 affordable at 60% AMI. Hayden Grove Senior Living is 166 senior units with 34 units affordable at 50% AMI. And then, also, oops, the district, which has 248 units, it's, it's under construction, it's, it's moving along well, and that's 50 units at 50% AMI. So, you know, we are producing a lot more units than just what we have since, have, what has come online since September of last year. These are the other pre-opportunity housing developments that are under construction or complete and occupied. These are the affordable housing developments under the ordinance. And we have many units in the pipeline, in the Gateway District, in, in South Loop, at Penn and American. We, this is an estimate of what we think will come forward in the next two to three years. We're really focused on our transportation and commercial corridors, per the StanTech study, Lyndale Avenue. You know, we're still focused on Penn and American. So we project that despite the pandemic, we will keep the momentum going to bring more affordable and market rate rental housing and also spur additional investment in the city. Are there any questions on the projects in the pipeline?
Questions? I see Councilmember Martin, and then Councilmember Carter.
Thank you very much, Chair and Mayor, and for all the information that's been presented tonight. Just real quickly and even anecdotally, I'm curious, it looks like the affordable components are largely concentrated kind of Penn American area and east in the community, and considering our goal to rejuvenate commercial nodes and neighborhoods across the city, do we know why that concentration is? Is it kind of lack of pooled funding, like we get from the Gateway District out of TIF, or kind of fewer high-density commercial nodes the further west you get in town? I guess, kind of, what are we seeing as we're talking to developers?
We have prioritized development in the Gateway District, recognizing that that is an area of, of the city where those additional incentives would assist in, in encouraging development in the Gateway District. And, you know, obviously, the South Loop as an opportunity zone is also a priority. And the, you know, the developments that are happening further west are, the majority with, with the exception of the Penn and American District, predate my time with the city. So I would defer, you know, to another staff member to provide more context for, for why those projects are occurring there as well.
Anyone else able to weigh in on that? To answer Councilmember Martin's question on the western edge of the city? If not, I'm sure we can get an answer back to you, Councilmember Martin, on that.
Yep, yep, I'm just, just kind of, longer term, if we're looking at, are we rotating these districts around the city? Kind of, what's the 20-year plan here? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, my question was very similar, and I guess I would just make the point that I think, you know, we very clearly, and I know this is coming up in the presentation, have articulated dispersion as a priority, where we're, you know, evenly distributing affordable units across our city. And I understand that there are different incentives in place that make it easier to develop affordable units in certain parts of the city. But I think it's really, really important, and again, I know it's in the policy as a stated priority, to make sure that we are dispersing these units across our city. And I even think about it, I mean, for me, I'm thinking about this from a racial equity perspective in terms of, I mean, I wouldn't want it to look like we have any kind of exclusionary practices happening, and I know that that's not. And so as inclusive as we can be, and, you know, as fairly distributed across the city, I think that that's critical.
Mayor Bussie?
Administrator Olson?
Thank you. Just an observation, the, I believe what's going on here is that the eastern part of the city was developed earlier, generally speaking, and so the buildings are older and lend themselves more toward HRE kinds of activity. And, but I do appreciate both the questions and comments from Councilmember Martin and Carter, because I think we need to be looking at this down the road and, and be concerned about the kinds of things that, for example, Councilmember Carter mentioned. So I think it's a good thing for us to keep our eye on. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Any additional questions? If not, let's proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, we delve into the Opportunity Housing Ordinance review. The goal of the ordinance is to promote development and preservation while furthering private market development in the city. As Councilmember Carter just mentioned, there are a range of goals, including a range of housing choices, health benefits, benefiting the lowest-income families, especially those at 30% of area median income, preserving NOAA units, and aiding in the development, financing, and acquisition of affordable housing in the city. It's important to note that substantial flexibility and incentives are offered to developers to help support compliance with the ordinance requirements, but also to help us spur that investment. Under the ordinance, we're required to provide an annual report to the council by October 1st. So this study session, the following study session, and our, are the precursors to that report. I believe we're all very familiar with the goals and the requirements for new construction as well as preservation. And the incomes have risen slightly since last year. The lower the income served, the greater the incentives, the more affordable units provided, also the greater incentives. This is the breakdown of affordable rent limits and area median income by household size. If you look at a family of 2, 41, 4, you know, that would be, or 49, 6, that would be more in line with those Met Council and HUD income limits. The, um... The goals of, and of dispersion, integration, high-quality design, phasing, and construction timing have, have generally been met well. We, we do know that it's dispersion and integration are incredibly important, as is phasing.
Michelle Quis, did we lose you there?
I, thank you for that, Mayor. The, the compliance options have shown that we did have one project to choose the payment in lieu, but then we'll be also creating an off-site or adjacent site affordable development. There are three categories of incentives under the ordinance, building and design process and fees, and the financial incentives, including our creation of our $15 million Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The building and design incentives for the first five projects, note, the Arter was not able to access the incentives because under the ordinance, with the payment in lieu option, the ordinance and the incentives do not apply. You can see that density and, and floor area ratio bonus were requested and approved, as well as every single project had a parking stall reduction, and Lyndale Flats and Village Club, both 100% affordable, requested enclosed parking space conversion. There's been some requests for minimum unit size reduction, alternative exteriors, material allowance, and then every single project requested storage space reduction. The process and fee incentives, we had no requests because we have no dedicated source at this moment to reimburse the city departments that would be granting the fee incentives, with the exception, exception of the expedited review. Lyndale Flats has, has requested that, and Village Club did receive that, although not formally under the ordinance because it's not in the Gateway District. The financial incentives across the board, every project came in asking for TIF and Lyndale Flats in order to access state bonding for tax credits. We have shifted that away from TIF into a land write-down, and this is something that will be important to track moving forward in light of our TIF capacity in general. The Gateway Development District is one of our priority areas, as is the South Loop. Norman Dale Lake and the Penn American Development Districts are also priorities, as are neighborhood commercial nodes that are added to the map in red dots. The, there's a note on the goals and objectives is that staff is recommending further collaboration across city departments to promote health as well as racial equity in affordable housing preservation and development. The first ordinance change is, are in the definitions. Staff is recommending that we clarify that rent, in addition to fees, must not exceed the hotter Met Council standards. This has come up primarily... This has come up primarily in parking, and it's something that, that we, we recommend. We want to give developers a lot of flexibility in how they finance their projects, but continue to be strong with our affordability goals. The onsite/offsite ordinance, staff recommends that when multiple adjacent sites are used to qualify for flexibility, that the shared sites are provided with equal access to infrastructure amenities such as sidewalks to transit and, and other amenities. And staff recommends clarifying the intent of integration in phased developments. The way that the low-income housing tax credit program works, it, it works best in Bloomington, the way it's scoring currently, to have a 100% affordable project, similar to 108 Place or Lindale Flats. That's what's proposed for the Quinn, and I know there was a lot of conversation in the phasing, the, you know, the more luxury market rate units at the Arter compared to the 100% affordable development. Coming next, raised questions on both integration and dispersion. So staff recommends that, that we clarify that in the ordinance upfront to make sure we're in line with our goals. Similarly, for NOAA additions, just clarifying that an existing NOAA property and a new development property may both qualify for the flexibility of the incentives of the ordinance, as long as the affordability is maintained across the site as a whole and not just for the new units. For payment in lieu, the current rate of $9.60 was set by that impact, economic impact study, and we believe that needs to be updated every three to five years to ensure the city is capturing all eligible costs. While we are able to replicate, thanks to our skills and talent in our planning department, we're able to replicate the study that was done by Bay Area Economics, but we don't have the tools for the economic impact analysis. That's something that staff will be looking into and bringing back to the council. We, we can provide all of the other data easily on an annual basis, and we'll need to watch the market closely to determine when, when we do need another economic impact study. The payment in lieu timeline also allows options for a payment either prior to permit or prior to certificate of occupancy. Staff prefers to have that payment in lieu deposited in the trust fund before the project proceeds. However, in the cases that funds are needed for construction, we'd be willing to continue to the certificate, certificate of occupancy date, as long as there's a firm development agreement in place. This is a new, brand-new recommendation to have a new minimum site, to support redevelopment on smaller sites regarding the minimum site area, the minimum site width, and the open space requirements. We have had several properties and, and many developers interested in several properties. Near 80th and Old Cedar, Queen and American, 98th and Nicollet, where we've had projects that the density necessary to, to produce affordable housing on those sites far exceeds what we, what our minimum site requirements are. So we're, we're working with planning to bring more definition to this, but this will be a proposed new addition to the ordinance. Height bonus, staff is supportive of council approval of a greater height bonus beyond the current limit to one story, on a case-by-case basis, taking into the consideration on surrounding property. Obviously, there's certain areas, perhaps like at 80th and Old Cedar, where it really makes sense to go up an additional level or two to create more affordable housing, but it might not make sense in an area that's more adjacent to single-family housing. Parking, parking has been, you know, one of the three main things in the ordinance that, that deviations have been requested for. The ordinance already allows for a significant parking reduction, and staff is, is recommending going beyond that. The community development team is reviewing citywide parking standards for potential reductions, and so at a minimum, the reductions will, may need to be revised for the opportunity housing units compared to the need for parking in Bloomington as a whole. And beyond that, affordable housing that's produced on the light rail and bus rapid transit, you know, within a quarter mile, or in some cases, up to a half a mile, those are, are development projects that we would like to see increased parking flexibility on, including enclosed parking. If we really want to get at those 50% and 30% AMI units, enclosed parking is one of the most significant drivers of development costs. So those are, are additional parking changes that we would like to look for in the ordinance. Also, the ordinance allows for reduction in closed parking, and staff recommends no longer requiring the carport covering option, given the council's action on Lindale Flats, and also when we're looking at affordability compared to cost of snow removal, tenant safety, et cetera, that's, that's a recommendation that, that, that we would like to see move forward. Another new topic for consideration is exterior materials. We are adding to the list and believe we'll still have high-quality design and construction. Storage space is, is the one, in addition to parking, this is the second one. What the development community is telling us is that they know marketability, they know who will be living in their developments and what storage the tenants that they are building for will need. They, I have heard anywhere from zero storage, that units are being designed to provide in-unit storage, that's a better option, and a, a more secure option, or up to 25% of what Bloomington requires is more in line, what the developers find is the market need or request. And so this is something that's been a strong message from the development community so far. Fee deferrals, we just want to add the language to clarify that we're able to, there's a typo in affordable, we're able to fund the fee deferrals if, if we have funds set aside through Affordable Housing Trust Fund resources. Another brand-new topic is the consideration of allowing accessory dwelling units. Bloomington currently only allows them as attached. The Planning Commission is interested in exploring, and staff would like feedback on whether or not the Planning Commission should further explore this concept in general and for affordable housing options. Flexibility is the spirit of the ordinance, is something that I hear and/or say on pretty much a daily basis since joining the city. And we recommend that should a developer seek approval of a combination of other measures that would increase the number of units, but deviate from the exact requirements outlined by the ordinance, that such a plan be considered for approval by the city council. Compliance, we, as you know, review an affordable housing plan submitted by each developer. We've created a monitoring tool to track affordability, and I put in an excerpt of, of the financing tab of the tool, but it will also be tracking the number of units at each percentage of AMI, the incentives that each development requests, and we're looking to attach a monetary value to those incentives. So the easy one would be an enclosed parking space is about $30,000 in added value per parking space for the development. And if you have 100 units and you allow surface parking instead of enclosed parking, you've just provided $300,000 to subsidize that development. Another, another good thing about the tool is it'll ensure that, that the license renewal process, environmental health, other departments in the city will, you know, have the information they need to do their jobs regarding development. You've seen these before. We regularly provide the affordability, the number and breakdown by bedrooms, the rents, whether or not the project is meeting the Opportunity Housing objectives, and which Opportunity Housing incentives the project qualifies for, the request is made, and the staff recommendation or final HRA port or council approval. The components of the Affordable Housing Plan are a narrative that the developer is required to provide to the Opportunity Housing Advisor. This plan becomes an exhibit to, to the development agreement and legally binding document, and, you know, it's a process, not an ordinance change, but we're, we're working to ensure that those are updated at the financial closing as well, in case they have changed slightly since being approved at the city level. The tenant protection ordinance is the next section of, of the presentation, so I will hold off on discussing that until we get to that section. And with that, thank you for listening to that very long list of ordinance notes or changes. You know, we put this list together in community development with the HRA, the port planning, and city legal, and so with, with input from developers, funders, and community members, we will be having focus groups with the three of those, the community members, government officials, philanthropic funders, other government funders, and the developers between now and when we come back to the HRA or the city council more formally. So with that said, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Well, that was a lot, and my suggestion might be, Ms. Shulquist, if we could, if we could maybe hit rewind here and maybe go back to page 25 of your, of your presentation and just kind of step through it once again. I see Councilmember Coulter with a question, but maybe if we could go topic by topic and get people to, if anything jumps out on them, that we can, we could discuss those specifically, and, because as I said, there was a lot there, and I don't want to, I want to make sure that we don't miss anything, or more importantly, that we just don't jump around and kind of go from topic to topic. Is that agreeable to everyone if we, if we kind of tackle it in that direction? Is that okay? I would like to do that, then. So when we get to page 26, I think, the, the Opportunity Housing Ordinance Goals. I know that Councilmember Carter brought up a few suggestions, a few pieces of this. If you could all just kind of go to, go back to page 26, and I think it's one more page there, Ms. Shulquist, if you could. Any discussion topics on, on page 26, the Opportunity Housing Ordinance Goals?
Oh, thank you, thank you, Mayor Bussey. My page numbers are not showing up on my, on my presentation.
Right there, right there is where you need to be. That's where you need to be. Any comments or input or suggestions, ideas on the specific goals of the ordinance that we put together? Councilmember Lohman?
One thing that I'd like to see us do on a long-term with this is to move from a posture of temporary housing to more permanent housing for folks. I know that it's more costly, but as I look at these goals, I, I'd like to see that somehow incorporated into this. I don't know how we do it, but, but I just think that, that there's, there's, as Councilmember Bologa has mentioned, when you look at the long-term sustainability of, of, of funding of this, more of these temporary options, we really need to kind of consider some of these things that may be able to, be able to help us kind of long-term. And then I think also, just given what we saw in the data earlier, there really is a need for us to, in a sense, and maybe we have it here, but really call out that 30% AMI and that 50% AMI. Certainly, the, we've seen the strategies, it seems that staff is, is trying to find ways in which to kind of do that, but maybe it makes some sense to, to kind of lay that out here, so that it makes it a little easier for us to kind of really focus in on that. So just a couple of comments and thoughts I might, might put you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I will note that the fifth bullet point here does talk specifically about at least 45, 445 of those being at 30% of area median income, so that is called out specifically. We don't necessarily call it specifically the 50%, but certainly the 30%. Any other comments or questions regarding the goals? Ms. Wilson, you're going to have to help me out here scrolling up and down if you could to see, I can see if any hands are up.
Mayor Bussey and Chair...
Commissioner Olson, and then Councilmember Carter. And then Councilmember Martin.
You're asking for comments on this particular set of goals, and we've, we've talked about other kinds of things as well beyond these goals, and, and that, that's fine, but I, I understood the purpose of the meeting tonight was to focus on this, and, and the focus is clearly in terms of this ordinance, which we're discussing, working to help out people who are not able to be in the market, marketable housing due to income and so forth. So maybe I need to be corrected about this, but my understanding is that the market rate by definition is what the market sustains pretty naturally. And so my understanding of this meeting tonight was to be, be focusing on the part where the market doesn't take care of it naturally. So if anybody wants to redirect my thinking, but that's my, my comment about this particular slide, and I like the idea that you're taking it section by section, Miss. Thank you.
Ms. Shulquist or Mr. Palermo, do you want to jump in on that, or can we just kind of jot that as a note and maybe can add that to the, the discussion?
Yes, Mayor, agreed, I'm agreed, taking notes.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So my, my comment is along the same lines that Commissioner Olson just brought up. So I appreciate that our conversation tonight is really focused on the Opportunity Housing Ordinance Goals and policy, and I do think, and maybe this exists, and I'm not aware of it at this point, but it would be helpful to have almost, you know, a broader set of goals or, you know, a strategic plan that outlines metrics more broadly. So for example, you know, I'm really interested in having conversations, and maybe not this year, maybe next year, but eventually having conversations around, you know, the, the gap in homeownership rates between black and white residents. And so there are things, kind of broader issues as it relates to housing and the ability for people to like build wealth and, and things like that, that I think would be really helpful to have, but I also understand that that's not the purpose of the conversation tonight, and so just wanted to... And so just wanted to kind of flag that for a future conversation.
Very good suggestion. Agreed. Councilmember Martin? Councilmember Martin, you might be on mute yet.
This time my mic was down, but off. Okay. Yeah, it would just be, be great, kind of nodding to what I was asking about previously to see kind of acknowledgement of workforce housing as a revitalization tool, either for kind of our commercial nodes or a lot of our neighborhoods. I understand that the kind of development infrastructure we have in place now, the Gateway District and South Loop are obviously geographically fixed. But considering that there's a lot of research and a lot of time that goes into deploying things like this, it would be great to be proactive about looking at areas, say on the west side, where we can really use it to spur some, some cool projects and some cool growth. So considering that it takes a while to get that up and running, it'd be great to start thinking about that now.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Nelson, then Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to pick up on the comment by Councilmember Carter. I agree with her completely about taking a look at the ownership gap. And I would encourage us to do that sooner rather than later. One of the things about the built environment, whether it's housing or commercial, whatever, is it hopefully lasts a very long time. And the decisions we're making today and the more projects we have going forward locks in whatever structural issues exist today for, you know, 40, 50, 60, 70 years. And the sooner we can take a look at those issues, the better, in my opinion, to help for, for multiple generations going into the future. So I just wanted to kind of express the urgency of that equity issue for this ordinance. I'd also just like to emphasize that I do think that the market rate housing is a component of the affordable housing discussion. One, you know, we have goals regarding dispersion within our communities. We have goals regarding integration so that we avoid concentrated areas of poverty. Because of past development patterns and various trends, we, we already have concentrated areas of poverty within our community. And I want to just make sure whatever we're doing from an ordinance level, we don't lock those into the future. We do whatever we can to help address and alleviate those. And, and, you know, candidly, the more housing we build, even if it's market rate, the less pressure that puts to drive up the price of, of housing that isn't affordable for people already. So just my couple of thoughts on these goals is I think we need to really elevate that equity issue.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Lohman.
Well, I think that's perfect, what Councilmember Nelson just mentioned. As I look at these goals, I'd like us to explicitly place that in, in these goals. And we sort of kind of talk about it here a little bit, but I think, I think we need to be a little more explicit about it. You know, we mentioned that in the numbers earlier, that there are demographics that are, that we're, we're looking at this. And so that's why I, when I look at this particular ordinance, you know, I, I can't, you can't just take things and sit them in silos. I think you've got to look at everything in total. So I would encourage us from a policy perspective, one, to be really explicit about how we want to look at our inclusion and equity piece. We said that we were interested in the, the, the health benefits here and we've got that here, but I'd like us to just be a little more explicit with, with our, with our goals around that. And then also, as we're looking at this opportunity housing ordinance goals, I think it might make some sense to have a look at how we be a little more sustainable with these particular properties. Folks that move into these particular properties are impacted from a, from economic standpoint. And we can ensure that these products, products that we've got going forward are environmentally sustainable. That also helps folks to save money in their wallets directly. So those are the two things that I would encourage us to, to look at being a little more explicit about.
Thank you, Councilmember Lohman. Any other thoughts on the goals? Some very good suggestions. Why don't we roll, if we could, to the next slide? And the slide, the, the point that I want to point out here, and we've heard a number of these things, is the final bullet point there in blue, which requires an annual report by October 1st. I think we've heard a number of suggestions or ideas or a wish list of what we like to see on an annual report, just some reporting information, some things that can help form decisions or help us set policies as we move forward with this entire discussion about opportunity housing in the city of Bloomington. Does, other than what has already been discussed or brought forward by a number of folks? And as, like I said, we've heard a, a number of different requests for data. Any additional information that we would look for in an annual report, a yearly annual report? Councilmember Nelson, is your hand up from last time or is it a new one this time?
Sorry, Mayor, I forgot to lower it. I will do that now.
It's just so confusing sometimes. Thank you.
Sorry.
Not a problem. All right, well, noodle that and we can always, if something comes to you, we can always move back. I'd like to move then to the discussion about opportunity housing eligibility and some of the financial issues that we've talked to. And those are the next couple of pages, the opportunity housing eligibility. And then the page that follows, the rental housing affordability. So I have a question for staff, a question, maybe a comment, maybe something we need to think about as an organization, as a groups here. So we look at the bottom of this page and it, the area median income is $103,400 for the area median income. That's the Minneapolis-St. Paul Bloomington MSA. But maybe, Ms. Shulquist, maybe you can help me out. You don't have to double back. I will just do it myself. And I'll just reference on page 10 of the report here. We talk on page 10, as I'm going back here quickly.
I know where you're going.
I'm sure you do. Page 10, we see under income, the median household income for the city of Bloomington is $72,100. So, so tell me, is, and I see those are 2018 numbers, so it's possible that might be a little bit old. But, so we use, in our calculations, we use area median income, but the Bloomington median income is significantly less. Talk about how that affects the decisions that we make and whether or not we should consider a different way of looking at the, our requirements and those numbers, those percentages.
Right, Mayor, very, very good point. You know, as I mentioned, you know, when, what I pointed out on this slide before, so the 60% AMI, or it, you know, if you double the 60% AMI, you're above that 103, right, for a family of two. Or even if you do, you know, for a family of four, 51.7 times two is pretty close to 103. But the 41.4, you, you double that and that's closer to that 80,000 number, right? So, you know, it's the HUD, the HUD data is, is by family size. But what this really shows is also that we need 50% and 30% units. The 60% or, or even 80%, I've heard developers describe 80% market rate, 80% units in Bloomington is market rate. And so it's something that we need to recognize that there's a difference between the American Community Survey data and the calculations that HUD and Minnesota Housing and Hennepin County and other funders use to define affordable and really focus on, you know, what are our needs in Bloomington? And that's, you know, that's the 30% to 50%. You know, that has been known and, you know, called out in the goals of the ordinance.
I would agree, and I think that that's exactly the point that I was making. So 60% of the area median income is one number, but 60% of the Bloomington median income is significantly less. So I think we just need to keep that in mind and keep that at the forefront as we continue this discussion and continue to, to move forward with some goals and with policy decisions and just numbers that have caught my eye as we've gone through all of this. Councilmember Carter, a question, comment?
Um, thank you, Mayor. This is a really quick question. Um, how often are these numbers kind of recalculated? So, and I guess I'm curious, obviously, we are seeing a huge economic downturn right now and there's going to be an impact on these numbers. But how quickly are they kind of recalculated and used in terms of, you know, figuring out affordable housing requirements?
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. They are recalculated annually and, but we didn't receive this data until preparing for this report. Well, HUD provides their data usually, I think, by April. So we have several months where we work with last year's data. And we need, we've chosen to use the Metropolitan Council's affordability limits. Sometimes they change some between different HUD programs. And, but generally, the HUD affordable rent limits and the, and the Met Council limits are the same. And so we focused on the Met Council because those are also our, where our goal, our number goals are coming from. But with that said, they're, you know, these are not, these are not the numbers that match what's happening in, in the housing market in Bloomington today or even since the pandemic.
I might jump in there too. It, it, it does lag behind. It is a formula that they use based on census data that HUD does to calculate this. And that formula kind of takes into an inflation factor and that inflation factor will likely probably even lag for next year. I don't know how, you know, how accurate they can get in a quick amount of time. So it, you know, probably see some reflection in next year, but it probably won't be close to reality. It's going to be more of a guess that HUD comes up with.
Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hadn't planned to bring this up now, but then you sort of brought this up with your, your comment as well. And I just kind of want to reinforce that, you know, based on the numbers that we've seen and, and you're, you know, you brought, you mentioned your comments on, on what, what exactly is 30 and 50% of area median income? And I, I just want to really emphasize the point that as we're talking about structural changes to this policy, as we're talking about retargeting the incentives. And I apologize if I sound distracted, but there's very loud cricket outside my window right now.
I thought that was somebody's phone going off.
No, that's definitely a cricket outside my window. As we, as we think about these things, you know, based on the numbers that we saw, it's clear that we have more work to do as far as housing that's affordable to folks at, at 50% of area median income and below. And so I, I just want to really emphasize that, that when we're making changes to this policy, that, that we are focusing on those things that are going to drill down more deeply into those more deeply affordable housing units to ensure that we're, we're really meeting the need. Because based, based on the numbers that we saw earlier, we're, we're not right now. And that, that is concerning too.
Thank you, Councilmember Coulter. I would watch your back, just a suggestion, just hearing what I was hearing back there. Any other questions or suggestions or ideas regarding the affordability and the eligibility, the numbers that we've been discussing here, the financial impacts? If not, Ms. Shulquist, if you could go down to the objectives, which again, I think people have discussed and brought through a couple of different ideas and possibilities, especially about dispersion and integration. Council or commissioners, any other suggestions or ideas regarding the opportunity housing objectives that we've talked about this evening? If not, let's move on if we could then. And I think the next logical topic might be the next slide, the opportunity housing development incentives. We talked about building design, the process and fees, the financial. And it, it does move into the next slide as well, looking at what those different incentives are and what they've been and how they've been used by the different developments that we've seen. Councilmember Carter, you have a question, comment, please? Councilmember Carter, I think you might still be muted.
I've been doing so good too. Thank you, Mayor. So I have a delayed question, a delayed response. Back to the slide around dispersion, the head dispersion and integration. How are we measuring ourselves? How are we measuring how we're doing against those objectives?
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. For each of the five projects that moved forward, we found that these objectives were met, all five of them. However, one of the slides does address the need to perhaps clarify this language to maybe go a bit deeper to define how these objectives will be met.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. Because I do think, I understand what you're saying as it relates to each specific project. But it, it does seem like there is an opportunity to be, like, tracking more holistically across the city, right? Especially as they, as it relates to dispersion and integration. So I appreciate that you've brought that up in a future slide too.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'd agree. It needs to be more than just an eyeball test, kind of looking at the maps and so on. Councilmember Lohman and then I believe I saw Councilmember Olson. So Councilmember Lohman and then Councilmember Olson, Commissioner Olson. Keep giving you a promotion again, John, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I've, I've already been promoted.
Councilmember Lohman.
If we go, we go to the, the next slide, my, my question's on the incentives piece that you, you were talking about, Mayor. So not this one, the, for your next one after this. So what I'm wondering, you've got this building design piece around the, the parking reduction. And so, and I'm not saying that I'm in favor of, of this by just simply asking the question, but I just wanted to at least put the question out there. You know, given the advent of, of, or the future advent of driverless cars and really the idea that we talk about in our city about creating a more walkable city, would it make sense to, to simply eliminate some of these parking requirements in some of the cases, given where the location is and give staff that flexibility to, to offer that, depending on, you know, where these particular developments are located at? So just something I wanted to kind of throw out there as a, just a question to, as you kind of go through this, you know, would that provide us the ability to achieve some of that 30 and that 50% piece that we're going to add on to the goals that we saw earlier? What, what would that afford the staff? Not that I'd be in favor of it, but I just, I'm just curious.
I see Ms. Worthington with her hand up there.
Thank you, Mayor Bussey, councilmembers, commissioners. That's something that our, our staff has been talking about quite a bit. And let me give you kind of a couple of areas that we've been considering, Councilmember Lohman. One is walkability, obviously, and trying to determine the distance from, for instance, high frequency transit. So that's one aspect of this conversation we've been having. We've also been talking about this very sort of hard and fast structured parking requirement, which is really expensive for development purposes and especially for affordable development purposes. So when you consider that a structured parking space costs anywhere between $30,000 and $50,000 per space, that starts to become a huge impediment for affordable housing developers, just in terms of creating a project that will pencil out or will cash flow appropriately. And so that's something that we want to bring back to a reasonable parking requirement for those properties, knowing that some residents will rely on a personal vehicle. But also thinking about it in, as you say, a more nuanced way, where, where those projects have good proximity to transit, can we decrease or eliminate parking requirements? And that's something that we'd like to investigate further and come back to with a firm recommendation about in the coming months.
Thank you. I think that makes sense. And I'm wondering, Ms. Worthington, is there, is there a way? I'm, I'm sure there is, a way to write any of these requirements, whether we, I, I don't know about bringing them all down to zero or eliminating them, but to, to even to reduce them and to, to maybe make them more affordable or more, more manageable. But to write each of the requirements in such a way that it, it's clear to developers that if, if you think that- that if, if you think that parking reduction should go down to 10%, bring it forward, you know, give, give us the reasons why. If you're, if you're right next to a, a transit stop, if you are on, in a very walkable area. I mean, can we write it in such a way that, that if a developer has a reasonable and, and a, an effective justification for what they're trying to do, that they can bring it forward to both the HRA and ultimately the council for that, that waiver? So just something to, to consider, rather than trying to write it in such a way that it covers all possible, possible options and possibilities, to write it in such a way that it gives the council and the HRA some flexibility in dealing with those.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We agree. We think that would be a good approach. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Olson, please.
Thank you. Actually, it fits well with what's been said. I was going to start by saying, and I'm starting by saying that I've appreciated through this whole process, going back years, the fact that we've, the city has worked with developers, dialogue and, and getting ideas and that kind of thing. And there was talk a little bit ago about doing some focus groups, including with developers. But I think as the focus groups go forward, I think that it would be very wise to, to look at each incentive as to is it doing what we want it to do? Is it important? And to the point that I think Councilmember Lowman said, is the, are we getting a return on the investment that's appropriate, you know? And so basically to say, let's carry on with interacting with developers and other stakeholders in, in this whole endeavor to, to find out if we need to tweak it or drop it or, or whatever. So and, and I don't know if we can ask for a particular date where the staff would come with a comprehensive response, or if it's better to, kind of what's been going on here tonight, take it a little bit piecemeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson.
Mayor Bussey, if I might just answer quickly the, the timing question.
Please.
Thank you, Mayor Bussey, councilmembers, commissioners. What we would recommend is that after we have our second workshop with you in September, we bring back a series of ordinance revisions and recommendations, probably sometime in that October, November timeframe for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds good.
Thank you. Other input or thoughts on this? We're going to get a bit more in-depth with a, a few of these as we get into some of the proposed ordinance changes. Councilmember Carter, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I do. It is specific to parking. Would you rather I wait till we get to that slide?
Why don't we do that? Why don't we wait until we get down to that slide where the, the proposed ordinance changed? If we could do that, that would be okay. What I'd like to do is we, right before we get into the proposed ordinance changes or notes, just a quick stop at the slide with designated transit areas and opportunity zones. I think it makes perfect sense, absolute sense, to make sure that the transit areas are not only served, but are probably focused on. Because it, just in terms of development, and we've seen the success of transit-oriented development, and, and just by, by its nature, development, I think, is much more successful if, if it has, if it's close to and easily served by transit. Our Gateway Development District, which we've been talking about for about a year now, and seeing some progress being made, or at least some movement in a number of different areas. Any thoughts, ideas, questions, concerns with these two pieces of our opportunity housing ordinance? Seeing none, let's dive right into some of these ordinance questions that we've been kicking about. I'm sorry, Councilmember Carter, did you have a question, comment? I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So kind of going back to our conversation earlier about, you know, a lot of the development happening on the east side. You know, obviously, a lot of this is east and central. And I'm just, I guess I'd be curious to know why more of the neighborhood areas on the west side aren't identified as areas for opportunity? You know, do we have zoning challenges? I, I'm just curious to know why other, other neighborhood nodes aren't identified by one of those little red circles.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Carter, I'm going to differ again to planning, because they have more history with the city than, than I do.
Mr. Palermo, can you help us out here?
I keep a little breakdown to this, but this was a little before my time, too. But I believe staff had conducted kind of a neighborhood commercial study that reviewed, these were identified as kind of the top priority commercial nodes that were, had a little bit more lack of investment and kind of where the city should prioritize any future efforts. There are certainly other commercial nodes out there, but they seem to be invested a little bit more from the property owners and less opportunity, I think, was kind of the, the thought behind that. I wasn't involved, this is several years ago that this was done, but that, that was kind of the thought process and kind of narrowed down the top three priorities, one of which was, I believe, Old Cedar and Old Shock was identified as a priority. I believe Portland and American, and I'm blanking on the third top one. But those kind of shook out as the highest priority is to try and spur some investment in those commercial nodes.
Why don't we tap into a little bit more institutional memory here? And I know that Shane Rudling is on the call as well. Mr. Rudling, can you shine some light on the questions that have been asked about the whys and the wheres?
Well, Mayor and councilmembers. So the, the commercial nodes that were highlighted, the answer to the question is very much in line with what Mr. Palermo was saying, is that the, the dots that were selected, and I have to say I wasn't intimately involved in the meat of that, but I was, you know, listening in, if you will, are the areas that didn't get investment on their own. It kind of dovetails a little bit with a question that was raised, raised earlier tonight about why we don't see, and I think this is maybe what Councilmember Carter's getting at, is why isn't there some development happening over there on the west side? Really, what's happened is that the, the west side is, is more market rate driven, but the market rate sites now with Covington and the Lexington have gone up. You've got rents coming in there. Everybody knows what people are willing to pay for the west side of Bloomington. And some of those sites have transitioned into senior housing. The one in the Norman Dale Lake District is the, is the most obvious one. The other one, north of 494 on the Old Lifetime side, is another one that's looking to be senior housing, if they could get that one off the ground. But those would typically be market rate sites, but the fact of the matter is you can get more rent in Eden Prairie or Edina, or some of the other neighboring communities. And so market rate housing is going there, and senior housing is going into those, those sites in Bloomington.
Councilmember Carter, does that help?
I, I guess I kind of wonder if this is a question that needs to be revisited, just to make sure that it still aligns with our stated goals and priorities. And then I guess I would also recommend, it would be helpful, at least from my perspective, looking at this map, if all of the neighborhood nodes, even the ones like in the transit, designated transit areas, were kind of marked. Because I think some maybe aren't marked because they're on the transit and they're in the little green shades. So that would be helpful. But yeah, I guess for me, it would maybe be worth kind of revisiting the conversation and making sure that, again, it aligns with the goals of the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. And, and if there are barriers in certain areas of the city, we could figure out how to address those.
I think that makes perfect sense to try and make sure that we're still in line with discussions that happened even a few years ago. Things are changing quickly in terms of not only transit, but density as well. And so I think that's a worthwhile discussion to have.
Mayor, Mayor Bussey?
Commissioner Olson.
Thank you. Actually, I'm just recalling, and I don't remember what year this was, but it was when Doug Grouse was here. And is Mr. Hartman on the phone tonight? He might be out of town. In any event, I do recall that the HRA and Councilmember Coulter, I think you were involved with this process. There was a very elaborate list of things that were studied, including what the area looked like and a whole range of things. And there were other, there were sites out in, in the western part of the city that were being considered. And the criteria that was used by the HRA was, did not end up moving them forward. And so that would be something to look back to, I think. And, oh, Councilmember Coulter, do you recall being part of that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, to, to Commissioner Olson's point, yeah, that was, that was back, I, before I was on the council, when I was on the HRA. And I don't, I see Mr. Hartman on the, on the list of participants here, but I don't, he, I, the-
I am present, yes.
Yeah, this, I mean, I think, Brian, what, what, what is being asked about was this neighborhood commercial node study that the HRA did, oh, this was maybe three, four years ago now? And how we came to sort of arrive at, at the particular nodes that, that are indicated on the map here.
Mr. Mayor. Chair Thorson, and councilmembers and commission members, this is Brian Hartman from the HRA Program Manager. And good memory, Commissioner Olson, yes, there was a commercial node study that was conducted during Doug Grouse's tenure with Jason Schmidt, I believe, from Planning, was the lead planner on that, where they identified specific commercial nodes. And, and both Mr. Palermo and Mr. Rudling alluded to that, and I, I am remiss as well. I don't remember all the top three of that particular study. But that is something perhaps we want to revisit. What also I think is important that, to understand that's not represented on this map, are previous successes that the, the, the City Council and the city as a whole has had. And I'm referring specifically to the efforts regarded to as the Spring of Pearls. I'm old enough in the, or in my tenure here at the city to remember that effort, which was very much a similar effort to identify redevelopment areas of the city to concentrate efforts. And Shane can help me with this, but one of the primary ones that I was directly involved with, well, two of them, where that was the Penn American, which is an ongoing, we're into a phase three redevelopment effort there, where we're now bringing some affordability. And also France and Old Chocapi Road, where the HRA and the city were involved in the two corners of that particular intersection. And we are seeing the, the final build out of that with 108 Place, bringing 60 units of affordable housing to that commercial node, which again, isn't represented on this map. So there have been previous studies and efforts. And I think we can do better as Councilmember Carter is representing them in totality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. What I, what I'm going to ask staff to do is maybe dust off the report that was done a few years back and make sure that everybody has a copy of that. I know we have new members of the HRA, as well as new members of the council, who may not be familiar with it. Provide that information, and we can also look at what might need to be updated or reviewed on that, that topic as well. So if we could do that, I think we would answer those questions about the opportunity zones, designated transit areas, the, the neighborhood commercial nodes and so on. Mr. Verbrughe would like to chime in. Mr. Verbrughe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Your last request was what I was going to offer for the council, and we can do the same for the HRA. But you'll recall that the City Council established Focus Renewal as one of the six strategic priorities back in early 2016. And that is really what the catalyst was for doing that study. The concern by the council back then was that we had not invested enough time in looking at our neighborhood commercial nodes and aging areas, both serving neighborhoods and some of the larger commercial areas. Glenn Markagard, I didn't see that he's on the participant list, I, I think he's tuning in, would probably be able to answer the one, two, and three question, but we started with about 16 different areas, whittled them down to about nine. Revisited that with the council several times. My recollection was maybe Old Cedar, Old Shock, 98th and Nicklet, and Portland and American were the top three. And Penn and 90th, I think, was pretty high on the list there, too. So we will get the report. We'll follow up with everybody. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrughe. Let's do that. Councilmember Carter, anything to add on this, or can we move past this and talk about it when we get the information into your hands?
You know, I guess I just wanted to make one point and clarify. My understanding, kind of where the conversation has gone, is, is kind of been around like redevelopment of the neighborhood quarters. And I think that's absolutely critical, and I understand that we prioritized and we were focusing. And I guess my, my point more is the dispersion of affordable housing across the city and, and wanting to make sure that our neighborhood nodes across the city are considered places for opportunity. Not necessarily like redevelopment of like whole neighborhood nodes that are outside of kind of our more specific areas like Gateway or whatever. But so I guess I just wanted to clarify that point, too, that it, I, I wasn't necessarily talking about redevelopment more broadly. I was really thinking about the dispersion of affordable housing units across our city.
Thank you for that clarification. I do think it all kind of goes hand in glove, but I think that's a good point. So thank you for, for clarifying that. All right, if we could now, council and commissioners, if we could just kind of start going through some of the ordinance notes and the ordinance change possibilities that the staff has brought forward. Some of them, including this first one, to recommend collaborating with public health, outreach and engagement, our racial equity coordinator, I think that's a no-brainer. I don't think anybody's going to oppose that. Any comments or anything to add to that as well? Perhaps we're missing out on something? I, I think the more folks involved in this process, I think the better and more effective it would be. Hearing no objection there. Our next page is about specific definitions. And again, I don't know that these are specifically, are concerns or, or items that folks want to talk about or debate. Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually just, I, I don't obviously need to debate anything on this, but I, I think I just want to commend staff for, for recognizing that affordability is more than just rent, that it, you know, there are all these other costs. And one of the things that I actually talked with Dr. Johnson about before he left was the concept of security deposit insurance, rather than sort of requiring that, that folks put down this sort of lump sum of cash for a security deposit, excuse me, before they move in. And I, I think the more that we can think about just other ways of, of addressing those, those cost barriers to folks getting into housing, the better. So I just wanted to, to bring that up.
Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Coulter, if, if I may, I won't do this very often, I'm here to listen tonight, but the City of St. Paul recently passed some limits on what property owners can provide or can require for first month's rent and security deposit. That's something that we and City Legal are tracking to see how, how that moves forward in St. Paul. And yes, we, staff is aware of the security deposit insurance and is happy to, to continue to explore all of these options for our, for our renters in Bloomington.
Very good. Thank you. Others? Moving on, without, and trying to pick up the pace, we're already two plus hours in, folks, and I know I want to be, want to be careful with time here. But I do want to move us along onsite, offsite. Any questions or concerns regarding this? Hearing none. Our next slide about onsite NOAA additions. Pretty straightforward there as well. Payment in lieu. So it does state that the economic impact study, it should be updated every three to five years. We're in year, what, two, one and a half? What are we officially on after that, that economic impact statement? Where are we with that, with the timing of this?
We're in year one.
Oh, we are officially still in year one. Okay. Thank you much. Seeing nothing there. Uh, minimum site sizes. I do like the idea of flexibility. I know we do have some odd shaped parcels here in Bloomington, some smaller parcels that, uh, if we could, uh, have some flexibility and work with a potential developer on that, I think it would be helpful. And the height bonus. I think the key here is the whole case by case basis, because the, the note that we don't want to necessarily get too high in specific residential areas. Chair Thorson, do you have a question? If you could turn your mic on. There you go.
I actually had a question on the earlier one, uh, minimum site. Are, are we, um, I, I wonder if Ms. Shoklis could elaborate a little bit more on this item and with some, an example of what a site might be like that has that. Would we talking about, um, something like the site at 98th and Niclet or even smaller? And secondly, I happen to believe that like open space or is important in, in every development. So I'm wondering if, as you look at the new minimum site, are we talking about maybe going higher to, to achieve the density and the number of units while still retaining some of that open space on the property for the residents?
Ms. Shoklis?
Thank you, Mayor Bussey, Chair Thorson, members and commissioners. Um, you know, this is, this is one that, um, I, I wish that, uh, Planning Manager Glenn Markagard was here to explain in depth. Um, but what I, you know, to paraphrase, what we found with one of the, we have three sites that we've know exist today that would benefit from this type of ordinance change. Um, one is the, the sites, the two sites that the H R A has option agreements on at 98th and Niclet. Um, another is a city-owned property near Queen and American. And then, um, the third is a property that a, a few affordable housing developers have been interested near 80th and, and Old Cedar. Um, and that one, um, is also, you know, in close pro- all, all of these are in close proximity to, to the B R T. Um, the, the initial, the first housing developer that, that looked at the 80th and Old Cedar site, um, was really looking at putting at least 90 units on that site. And, um, the current unit, um, uh, code compliant unit rate was about 36 units. And, um, they just, they wanted to do 100% 50% A M I there and, um, really needed the density um, and needed the entire site and also needed, uh, uh, to not need to meet the enclosed parking space requirement 100%. Uh, for various reasons, that project did not work out. And the second developer that's looking at the site is also looking at, um, I believe it's like 50 or 60 units that they're thinking about, which again is not as high as 90, um, but it, it is close to double, um, what would, you know, currently be, um, uh, with, in line with our code. So, um, just, I wanted to give that, um, background to, to inform us where this is coming from. And it's coming from, um, both affordable and private, uh, market rate housing, you know, nonprofit and private affordable and market rate housing developers looking for good opportunities, good sites in the city. And, um, this new minimum site area um, would really assist, uh, with, with meeting our affordable, uh, goals. The open space requirements, I think that's also, um, you know, something to address on a case by case basis. How near is it to a park, um, or other open space? Um, are there certain areas of the city um, where because of proximity to transit, um, we might take, um, a different perspective in order to get some 30 and 50% A M I units, um, built? So.
Mayor Bussey and council members, if I could just jump in and also just say that I think we're looking very carefully at the intersection between the O H O and our, uh, land use regulation. And generally speaking, um, trying to have a very holistic conversation about how we approach things like density and height and open space requirements and parking, because these things are all interrelated as we move forward with recommendations to the council about changes, uh, both to the O H O ordinance and to, uh, city land use regulation.
Chair Thorson?
Thank you.
Councilmember Baloga.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you know, one of the things that struck me in hearing the discussion is, is, uh, we have for a lot of land use, uh, variance, uh, opportunities. And while we have flexibility, uh, we do have such things as minimum sites and, um, open space requirements and so on. But we are not giving ourselves the opportunity for, uh, looking at these for as much flexibility as we may with some of our other, uh, opportunities within the city through variances. So, uh, I know we're talking about it, uh, in the context of, uh, setting a site minimum, you know, a fixed number. But I would like to see us continue with those site minimums, yet encourage, uh, staff to bring those forward to council on a case by case basis, so that we could exercise discretion based upon the uniquenesses of each site.
Thank you, council member. Agreed. I think, uh, to my point earlier, to write this in such a way that, uh, it can be, it can be open for discussion based on the specifics of the different proposals and the different sites being considered. Anyone else? Commissioner Olson?
Thank you. Um, I, 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 I think that sentiment makes sense, uh, as, uh, mentioned by, uh, Councilmember Baloga. Um, I, uh, on these two slides on minimum site and the height, uh, bonus, uh, one of the things that, um, I think, uh, we all need to be, uh, planning for and, and developing is, uh, more outreach, uh, in the form of education about what's going on. I have, um, I'm involved with a coffee group that meets once a week and I get there maybe once a month. But, uh, that's one of the places, just one of the places where I've heard some pushback about, uh, Lindale retrofit, where they're talking about, um, uh, with considerable emotion, uh, you're not going to be taking our, our homes to do this. Are you, or, you know, or is that planned? And, uh, in terms of, of, uh, taking over land. And, and then the other thing about minimum site, I, I remember, uh, that, uh, we've, we've talked about unless we end up, uh, taking land from our parks. And I'd, I'd like to hear more from, uh, uh, Mike Palermo about this. But that the adequacy of land for what our growth needs are is not understood to be, um, uh, likely to take care of our needs unless homes are taken and, and whole blocks is one of the things that people said, uh, to end up having, uh, giant things. I, I recall when I was on, uh, council that, uh, when the Applewood Point, uh, that was built just east of France on Old Chocopee came up, we had a lot of very, um, emotional kinds of, of pushbacks about, uh, this big monster coming in. We've heard before about the McMansions and so forth. So, all I'm saying is that on these points, I think we need to certainly investigate them, but we need to bring our community along, uh, residents along with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's move on if we could. I think we've covered new, uh, minimum site and height bonus. Parking, we've, we've talked about that with the same idea of flexibility, unless anyone has specific thoughts on parking. Councilmember Colter? And then Councilmember Carter, please.
So I just sort of, um, this was, this was, so first of all, I have, I have surrendered to the cricket and closed my window. Um, but this was the, the first of, of kind of three areas in a row where I just wrote a note and it basically came down to an equal sign and yes, with an exclamation point. Um, I know Ms. Shoklis and I have talked about this a lot, but I, I think we are, and I know I'm not the only one who thinks is, we are very much overparked in the city of Bloomington. And I think that extends to residential parking in multifamily housing most particularly. So, I, you know, I agree with flexibility, but I, I think we can take a very, very serious look at, uh, reducing parking requirements generally. Um, and specifically the, the, um, enclosed parking requirement as well. Um, so I just, to, to Councilmember Loman's point earlier, I don't know if I'd support, you know, a, a complete elimination of, of parking requirements. But I, I think we can be, be creative and a little more forward-thinking and, and I dare I say bold on, on some of these things than we traditionally have been.
Councilmember Carter?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so my opinion on this, I guess, is, is constantly evolving. Um, but I guess I have a couple of concerns, um, related to parking and reduced parking. And, um, and so I guess I would just, uh, I, I would need more time to consider and think through. But, um, a couple of concerns for me, in the data at the beginning of the presentation, I think it, I, I can't remember what the exact, um, percentage was of the amount of renters that had kids. And I am, um, I'm afraid that by reducing parking, we might be disproportionately impacting families. And then also, um, you know, a lot of people, we just saw in the data, too, you know, people have to work two minimum wage jo- more than two minimum wage jobs to afford a one-bedroom apartment in Bloomington. And so people are working multiple jobs at odd hours that don't always, and they're not always served by our transit sys- system well. And so those are two concerns for me, I guess, um, as we talk about parking and reducing parking. Um, I'm definitely like open to the conversation and, um, uh, and I think that it really is site-dependent. But I don't want to, again, um, with good intentions adversely affect low-income families and, um, who, who may rely on multiple vehicles to get to jobs and to get their kids to school and et cetera. Um, so I guess I will, I will leave that there.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. Other thoughts on parking, enclosed parking? Then if we could move to exterior materials? And then ultimately to storage space. It's been a discussion at the council level, at least a couple of times. I will say, I just, I was over at the Fenley this afternoon, touring the Fenley, and they're, they're starting to fill up. And, uh, did get the note that for their storage space, that, uh, they have about 10% of the storage space that was required is currently now being rented. So their, their, their anecdotal first-person account is that, uh, they have too much storage space over there now. So just a thought. Councilmember Colter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, that, that leads very nicely into the comment that I wanted to make, which is, um, you know, staff, uh, mentioned that what they had heard from the development community, and I just want to make sure that, um, while I, I don't doubt that that's the case, I want to make sure that we're sort of connecting with tenants and, and landlords and, and property managers as well to make sure that that matches up with the reality of, of sort of what folks are experiencing in, in their everyday lives. That, that it turns out that yes, that, that that is actually the case as far as what folks need in terms of storage space. Um, because I, I think sometimes we, we, it's easy for us to sort of assume one side of the equation represents the other side as well. So that was all I had to say.
Councilmember Loman, then Councilmember Carter.
Well, in the past, I've been very, uh, reluctant to want to go down the storage, uh, uh, area and reduce that. Um, but you know, I, I think again, we look at this 50 and the 30% A M I. And, uh, if, if the, uh, if they're telling us that they can provide us additional, uh, you know, 50 and 30 A M I to, to kind of get to that goal, I think it's worth, uh, trying to, you know, let, let's see what we can do, uh, to reduce it not only for those, uh, units, but just, you know, broadly, if, if the market is saying that, uh, there's something they can provide for us and it seems reasonable, let's, let's give it a shot, let's try it. Um, um, you know, this again is a, you know, these are mostly temporary, uh, units and those kind of spaces. So, um, you know, I, I'm really interested to see, you know, what, uh, this would provide, uh, for our, you know, future residents. Uh, if we can, uh, bring this down, I'm, I'm interested in, in keeping an open mind about this.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I appreciated Councilmember Colter's suggestion of, um, getting input from renters. And I was actually thinking about that related to the parking issue, too. Um, so I think that, um, focus groups are, you know, part of next steps. And I, I would hope that there is robust conversation happening with tenants so that we can better understand some of the barriers that they might face. Um, and, and we might find that, you know, that the, the store space, that it's really not an issue and, and, and it's a really great area for opportunities. So, um, I just wanted to echo the sentiments of engaging renters in this conversation.
I see Councilmember Baloga, and then Commissioner Huheem.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, one of the, uh, I, I'm just going to echo, uh, what's already been said, uh, on, uh, uh, getting feedback from, um, the, the tenants in addition to the landlords. Cause this is somewhat contrary to what we see our, uh, external, uh, storage space requirements going up in our city. Um, we've had an exponential growth in those, and there is, uh, a part of that being driven, uh, by sources that we don't necessarily understand. Uh, is it the renter? Is it the homeowner who just is, uh, maxed out? So I'd really take a global look at that to get data, uh, because I think it really, um, adds context to the question. Uh, additionally with, uh, parking, uh, we do have some areas that, uh, uh, we've had on the transit line. It's, uh, the condo development in front of Health Partners, whose name I'm struggling to recall. But we have a significant problem parking there. And that, uh, was built, uh, a number of years ago under, uh, yet higher standard than what we currently have. Uh, so, uh, I'm concerned about, uh, you know, I like the objective of, uh, creating more, uh, uh, 30% A M I units. But, uh, I really feel that we need to examine, uh, the causation of, uh, where we do have overparked issues, uh, the causes of those, even if they are or are not in transit. Thank you.
Commissioner Huheem?
Thank you, Mayor and Chair Thorson. Um, I just, I'm going to echo, I guess, now, um, Colter and Baloga. Um, and the fact that I really hope that with this, um, when we're talking community partners, that we're talking about, um, some of our property management companies that I know the city has some good relationships already with quite a few property management companies. And I think that it would be really good to get their feedback on a lot of this, um, before we go making, you know, complete decisions, just because they're the ones that are in the industry and they're the ones that know what the industry tendencies are right now. So I'd really push that we also involve the property management companies in some of these conversations.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything further on storage space?
Bussey, council members, I just wanted to mention that we do think there is a linkage-
Bosie, councilmembers, I just wanted to mention that we do think there is a linkage uh, between this issue of storage space onsite and the preponderance of self-storage throughout the city. And we do want to make sure that we're not missing some kind of connection there. So we will include, uh, that analysis in, in our recommendations as well as, um, information that we glean from conversations with landlords and tenants. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on if we could. If anybody else has something pressing to add, move on to fee deferrals. Comments there? Next would be ADUs. I think the big question is the final bullet here. Uh, should we add the item to the 2021 Planning Commission work plan to further explore this concept? Councilmember Coulter?
Yes.
Thank you, councilmember Coulter. Other thoughts on this? Commissioner Huhim, is your hand up again or is it still up from last time? I get confused very easily sometimes.
Sorry, I forgot to take it down.
All right. Councilmember Martin and councilmember Beloga, then Chair Thorson.
Uh, just, uh, adding that I would be supportive of looking at this as well.
Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, I'd be supportive of looking at it, but I'd like to look at the, uh, uh, whole work plan for 2021 by the planning commission to make sure that, uh, other priorities are also being met.
Chair Thorson?
Um, I also think we really should be looking at it. I, I think it also solves some, you know, uh, issues with, uh, older parents needing care. And I think it, I think the, uh, idea of accessory housing uh, spans a, a lot of needs and, and is very worthy of looking into and seeing, uh, what can happen.
I think we, I'm seeing a nodding consensus toward at least considering this to add to the 2021 Planning Commission work plan. Uh, make sure that it can fit in there and, uh, we can, we can work with it. So if staff could take note of that and move it forward, that'd be appreciated. Alternative flexibility, we've been talking, I think throughout the discussion here, we've been addressing this in one way or another. And, uh, the final bullet point there being flexibility is the spirit of the ordinance. Any other thoughts on the alternative flexibility? Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. So I actually, um, I'm not sure I totally understand what this means and how it would be different from how we're currently operating. Um, so if, if staff could explain just kind of the difference between, um, what we're currently doing and what this change would do, that would be helpful for me.
Thank you, Mayor Bosie, Chair Thorson, Councilmember Carter. Um, there, the language that's in the ordinance is, um, we think the strength could be the strength of the ability for developers to come through or come to the council, HRA deport with alternative plans, um, and have them be approved. Um, the flexibility is mentioned, but we think it could be strengthened as an option and clarified. So, um, we will be proposing language that's a little more direct and defined.
Could I jump in, Mayor and Council?
Please.
This goes with exactly what I've heard a couple of you mention with regard to parking and storage and some other uh, very specific, uh, attributes of these projects. And I think this speaks to, um, us asking you as policymakers to give us some guideposts, uh, and some parameters, and then we bring these projects back to you. Uh, after we have worked with the developer to really finely tune them to those goals and hopefully bring you a project that is, um, a better project.
It's helpful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does that help? Councilmember Carter? Very good. Let's go on to councilmember Nelson and then councilmember Loman, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my only comment on this one is I'd like to see somehow the flexibility, um, if possible, connected to, less reliance or no reliance on TIF to get the project to move forward. Um, I note that that is the only thing in the Opportunity Housing Ordinance that all projects used. Um, although the one got switched over some other funding source, but pretty much all of them. Um, the other part is as an alternative, how it would help us get to that, uh, much lower income of 30% or so on that, uh, you know, it just had the, I think the flexibility has to be driving towards that where we can provide these projects with, with less subsidy, um, or and or much deeper, um, affordability, uh, parameters within it.
Councilmember Loman?
I think Councilmember Nelson stated it well. Uh, even I would even go as far as to say maybe we ought to, you know, limit some of that, that flexibility around that goal or or, uh, there'd be some kind of standard where, uh, once we, we achieve a certain objective around, uh, 30 and, and 50%, that then we could use some of that flexibility on other, other parts of the, uh, the project, uh, projects, but, uh, uh, very much in agreement with the idea of the spirit of, uh, of, of the ordinance and this flexibility idea. And want to encourage us to kind of move forward with that. And I, I'm not saying that we should limit that at all. I'm just saying that maybe, uh, that might be a, a way to help us focus in on that, uh, a little bit more, but I wouldn't want to do anything to prevent us from being more flexible. Um, so, uh, I'm looking forward to seeing this in action.
Thank you, councilmember Loman. Any other thoughts? Let's wrap up this portion of it where we talk about compliance, which I think is, uh, more operational here about submission, submission and, um, tracking affordability incentives and so on. Any comments on this? If not, I'm going to turn it back over to staff and take us through tenant protection. Again, with the eye on the clock that we are two hours and 40 minutes in, I want to be respectful of folks' time. So let's push through the, uh, the tenant protection and the, uh, housing stability resources, if we could, please.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, and Chair Thorson. The 90-day tenant protection includes a 90-day period limiting rent increases, limiting tenant rescreening and preventing non-renewal of leases without cause uh, upon sale of a natural or naturally occurring affordable housing, uh, project to new ownership. Um, the, the requirement is that if the new owner, um, takes any of those routes, um, and the tenants would be displaced, that the new owner would provide three months rent as relocation assistance upon the failure, um, um, not necessarily to comply with the ordinance, but to, um, keep those units affordable. Uh, the strategies that the city, um, has pursued regarding the 90-day tenant protection, uh, ordinance, other than preserving 306 units at Village Club, which was, um, um, an amazing, um, accomplishment for the city, is that, uh, there is a NOAA project tracking team to try to pre-identify NOAA project sales or actual NOAA project sales. That includes the HRA Planning, Environmental Health and Assessing. Um, we are currently tracking all NOAA properties in Bloomington, in Bloomington and updating that quarterly or biannually twice a year as needed. Um, we focus on, we're focused now on the top 25 potential future sales uh, of NOAA properties based on size, condition, proximity to transit and other amenities. And we know we have more work to do in engaging broader community partnerships, um, with the, um, types of, um, community members that can assist us in trying to identify these properties, um, pre-sale, including lenders, brokers, affordable and private housing developers, um, the Bloomington Housing Action Team, um, and, and others to help us, um, be informed of the market, but also be in a position to educate both property owners and tenants. Um, and, you know, we're putting together an action plan, um, to have in place for when a NOAA property, um, comes on the market and, um, sells to be sure that, um, all owners and renters, um, understand their rights and responsibilities under the ordinance. So are there any questions on the 90-day tenant protection ordinance?
Council commissioners, any questions on the tenant protection ordinance? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is not specific to the, the tenant protection ordinance, but, um, I'm just wondering, it's been a while since we've heard anything about any of the other options that were in that, um, NOAA preservation matrix that was developed a few years ago. Um, you know, I know we had talked about, uh, some things related to, um, greater use of section eight vouchers and, uh, right of first refusal and things like that. So I'm just wondering if, um, there's been any discussion about sort of what other, you know, obviously not taking our eye off the ball as far as this ordinance, but what other, um, options and, uh, staff is, is looking at pursuing?
Ms. Shokwist or perhaps Ms. Worthington?
Go ahead, Heather, please.
Thank you, councilmember Coulter. Sorry, I was a little slow on my, uh, video and unmute button. Um, we, we are looking at a variety of um, options that we're going to be talking with legal counsel about. And we just haven't had an opportunity to do that yet. Uh, we would like to bring that back at a future workshop. And I think we would want to do that in conjunction with our colleagues in legal to ensure that, uh, we're bringing forward, um, ideas that can actually be enforced and, and adopted with, um, uh, with the hope that they will actually have a positive impact. So, um, thank you for your patience with us as we, um, as we narrow that, uh, list of ideas down and, and get some more information on it.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Other questions on the tenant protection strategies? Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess I just wanted to quickly request, um, that list that's been considered in the past. It would be helpful for me.
I'm sure we can get that to you. I remember that list myself as well. So yes, um, if staff could make sure that we see that and, and get that perhaps in the end of the week, uh, the Friday mailing would be great if we could do that.
Thank you.
Others? Let's move on to housing stability resources, COVID-19 housing stability resources.
Mayor Bosie, um, Chair Thorson, this is Brian Hartman, uh, program manager with the HRA. Um, happy to prevent, uh, present to you some updates tonight, um, specifically, um, on the rent assistance for eviction prevention that the, uh, uh, that our, our colleagues at Veep have been in Bloomington. Their most recent update, uh, we showed that that since May 1st, they've distributed over $428,000 in rental assistance to 325 Bloomington households. Their average household payment, uh, is about $1,300. Um, go to the next slide here real quick. Some very interesting demographic information that we are, have received from, um, um, Veep showing who they are assisting. In this, uh, slide, we can see the demographics that they are, uh, serving a large percentage of Hispanic and/or Latino, uh, population, uh, in the city. Um, and also, uh, a large percentage of Black and/or African American. There we go. Thank you. Um, impact, um, the first, uh, chart here in the lower, uh, left-hand corner shows, uh, household size. And it's important to, uh, really, uh, take a look here at the size of the four and five bedroom household size, uh, people that we're serving as well as the one bedroom. So, um, there is a large spread of different household sizes that they're assisting, um, with their emergency rent assistance. Um, also the incomes, uh, they are serving folks that are, um, very low income. If you look at the first income categories here, these are monthly incomes, 38% of the people, uh, that have been assisted through their emergency rent assistance program, uh, at $499 or less. And these are households that do not have eligibility for unemployment, um, the supplementary unemployment benefits, um, the COVID payments, et cetera. Um, in addition to that, uh, the Minnesota Home Ownership Center, uh, which provides foreclosure prevention and counseling assistance for Bloomington residents, uh, has applied for and has been successful receiving state and Hennepin County funds to serve, um, Bloomington residents with these services. Um, so this is the, the primary, um, go-to for prevention of, 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 um, uh, foreclosure and also for counseling and, uh, assistance. Um, going forward, some of our COVID housing stability strategies include, uh, continuing to monitor renters serving on a monthly basis and homers, homeowners serving on a quarterly basis. Continue to move in support partnerships with Veep, the Home Ownership Center, um, and also through Hennepin County and the state through the CARES Act resources that are, are flowing through those, uh, sources. Um, we are going to coordinate with communications and, and, and partner with organizations to reach residents of, of the BIPOC community, um, along with co-ed, public health and community development. And we are re-engaging property owners through our rental housing collaborative, uh, along with our partners with, uh, in co-ed to do that strategy. Any questions on our, uh, on the Veep update or foreclosure prevention counseling?
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Some pretty daunting and sobering statistics when you look at the number of households served and the need out there for this and, uh, tip of the hat to, to Veep for taking the lead on doing all the work on this and for the HRA for the contributions that they've made to this and the, uh, uh, I know the city has come up with, uh, CARES Act money. So a lot of folks involved and it's a, it's a big and heavy lift and such an important lift to, to do. Councilmember Loman?
Real quick, I know we, we certainly have talked about rental assistance here. It's out there. Is there, and I know we're primarily focused on rental stuff. Is, what is there out there for those who are, uh, getting themselves, uh, you know, twisted around a, a tree with the, uh, with their, 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 uh, their regular mortgage? Um, uh, is there any assistance out there for, for those folks? I know that that, you know, there's kind of a, it's a longer track period of time, but those, uh, those mortgages certainly, uh, start to build up. What, what is the, uh, city and, uh, uh, community doing for those folks, uh, uh, to prepare for that eventuality at the end of the year?
Mr. Hartman? Please.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Chair Thorson, councilmember Loman, uh, the, the Home Ownership Center is the, the statewide organization that coordinates and provides, um, counseling and, uh, assistance, um, for homeowners who are getting behind in their, um, their mortgage and also how to prevent that from happening in the first place. Uh, what we're finding, um, at the present moment, that a lot of lenders are working with homeowners to, um, perhaps put payments on the tacked onto the end of their, um, um, their current mortgage term. So there's workouts that are happening. Um, and maybe, uh, Ms. Shokwist could also shed a little light too, with her previous history working in this area about the exact operation of the Home Ownership Center.
Um, thank you, Mayor, Chair Thorson. Um, the Home Ownership Center, well, while they do not have network, um, service providers that are located in the city of Bloomington, um, all of their service providers are available to City of Bloomington residents. And most of the counseling is occurring, uh, virtually at this, uh, point in time. They, um, do, did receive funding from Minnesota Housing with the COVID-19 Housing Assistance Prevention Program to provide direct mortgage payment assistance when needed. Program to provide direct mortgage payment assistance when needed and continue to offer the foreclosure prevention counseling as well.
I guess what I'm concerned about, there are those folks that are on the edge of our society who have made that transition from rental into ownership. I just want to be sure that we're also providing some support for those folks who may be on the bottom end of that level, that there isn't, we don't have a gap in our assistance. So I'm not really hearing an answer to my question, other than that there is an institution that's out there that's giving counseling, but I don't hear that there are any dollars available. So that's what I'm hearing, but maybe correct me if I'm wrong.
Member Lowman, I apologize if I wasn't clear enough. Minnesota Housing did provide direct mortgage assistance payments, funding to $10 million for statewide to the homeownership network, and those resources are available to Bloomington residents through the Minnesota Home Ownership Network. So if we have Bloomington residents that need assistance paying their mortgage, we need to refer them to the Home Ownership Center. Minnesota Housing reserved about $40 million of the $100 million they were granted to utilize by the end of this year for both rental and homeownership foreclosure prevention assistance. And so if we see a rise in the number of Bloomington homeowners or homeowners across the state that need access to that assistance, there are additional funds available that could be made available to the Home Ownership Center.
I'd like to see some of those requirements that are part of that. I know this is a separate discussion, just because I'm just particularly concerned about those folks who find themselves on the edges of our society. We talked at the very beginning of this, I've known some folks who have been pretty close to me in Bloomington that have had some trouble trying to gain assistance and that kind of thing. So I just want to be sure that they're not falling through the cracks because they're not renting. So I just, if I could get some more information about that, I would be very helpful if you could send that over to me, because I'd like to see what the requirements are on that or if there's any pitfalls with that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Will do.
Additional questions on this topic? If not, if we can move into our Neighborhood Rehabilitation Loan Program, two very successful programs, our home rehabilitation and our curb appeal programs that have done very well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Chair Thorson and Commissioners and Councilmembers. Kind of recap of our Neighborhood Rehabilitation Loan Program. The city through the HRA operates two primary rehabilitation loan programs. One is funded through our CDBG program. The second one, which is our focus tonight, is our Neighborhood Rehabilitation Loan Program, which has been a citywide program for a number of years. We have a map that shows kind of the dispersion of the loans that we've made since 2016 detailing with the blue stars and crosses, the CDBG program, and then the green with the Kelp Loans, and that's the Curb Appeal Loan Programs, and then also our Neighborhood Loan Programs. So we're seeing really good dispersion across the city. We did have a Curb Appeal Loan Program that operated from '17 through '19, and we had identified specific neighborhoods to offer those up to $10,000 exterior-only improvement loan programs, and those are represented by those red stars. Go to the next program, next slide, please. Just to kind of, again, a recap, the Rehabilitation Loan Program offers deferred 2% loans for up to $35,000. This is available to homeowners up to 100% AMI, and eligible repairs include interior and exterior improvements. This is, again, a deferred loan, is only repaid when it is sold, and again, is offered city-wide. Recap here, some activity here for the Neighborhood Loan Program, also the Curb Appeal Loan Program. In 2019, we did 77 loans. We had a big year that year. City contributed $412,000. The HRA contributed $1.3 million. In 2018, there were 57 loans, we're $315,000 city contribution, HRA 1.1. So we've had some really great impacts, some really terrific participation in this loan program over the last several years. For the 2020 Home Improvement Loan Program, so far this year, we've had 43 applications received to date. We've had 16 loans committed or closed. We've committed over $500,000 worth of funding. The city, or excuse me, the HRA has budgeted $600,000 this year for this program. We anticipate receiving about $300,000 in repayments. We are requesting tonight support for a future decision of contributing $300,000 in city strategic priority funds to additional loans for the 2020 neighborhood program year. Given currently the reduction in funding, we would continue with putting the Curb Appeal Program on hold for future analysis for perhaps picking that up in a future year. So just kind of recap, we are requesting $300,000 in strategic priority funds. We have consulted with the city CFO, and the current fund balance has the ability to make this payment for the current program year. Again, that's the 2020 program year. That would be fund additional loans yet to be committed and made in this existing year. Going forward, we'll work to identify additional resources from state and/or county that may be appropriate to fund this type of rehab in future years. Again, we'd like to entertain any questions regarding the Neighborhood Rehabilitation Loan Program and the requests for the $300,000 in strategic priority funding.
Council questions? I will just add, I just looked over to Chair Thorson and commented how impressive that map is, the first map that came up with the stars on it, just the dispersion and the penetration throughout the city. I think it shows just how deep these programs have gone, and frankly, all you need to do is drive through some of those areas to see how successful and worthwhile this has been. This is definitely money well spent. So hats off to you for that. The question of strategic priority funds just this evening, I guess I'm unclear, Mr. Hartman, are we actually making the call on this tonight, or is this part of a nodding agreement or something that we're looking to discuss in the future as we talk a little bit more about our budget realities for the coming year or two?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry if I was unclear. Yes, we are looking for maybe a nodding of agreement for this to be brought forward to a future council meeting for a decision. My understanding is that if the opinion is positive this evening, that finance staff would draft an ordinance for a future consideration of dedicating current funding for the current year, we're not talking 2021, just current 2020 budget of that allotment of $300,000, excuse me, to the Neighborhood Rehabilitation Loan Program.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember Martin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that, you know, first, I think this is a fantastic program. Like you said, you can see the benefit of it in our neighborhoods. The only thing that gives me pause is obviously our economic situation right now and putting money in. We got, we just talked about people that may get foreclosed on that, that may get evicted from their apartment and the needs, and then we're helping people fix up their house, which is important, but trying to weigh those priorities in a relative way. And I guess, you know, one of the questions I have regarding this funding is, is it possible to use the Housing Trust Fund? Is this related to that in any way for any of this so that it isn't part of general fund money or some other source of funding for it, given the number of priorities we have right now?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hartman?
Chairman Thorson and Councilmember Nelson. My understanding of the Housing Trust Fund is that this is not identified as an eligible use at present, but I would defer to Sherri Shulquist for an opinion on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Chair Thorson, Councilmembers. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund currently must follow tax increment financing guidelines where it needs to be used for affordable housing that meets the 50% or 60% AMI limits and is really tied to multifamily development. However, as the Affordable Housing Trust Fund grows over time and we're able to identify dollars within the fund that are more flexible outside of tax increment financing requirements, that is how we dedicate those resources will be up for discussion. Obviously, the creation of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund came through the Opportunity Housing Ordinance and is targeted primarily to meeting our affordable housing goals, but ordinances can be amended. Another issue I see there is it's focused, the ordinance focuses on single-family homes of 20 homes or more in the development and preservation. So that is another way that the ordinance and the trust fund might not currently be a good fit for this type of work. However, we recognize that rehabilitation loan, the goals of the Rehabilitation Loan Program are very important to the city and help stabilize existing homeowners in their homes and are also often, you know, the most affordable housing option for that family or individual. I know that many seniors are served by these programs and, you know, may not even have a mortgage at this point and are living on fixed incomes. So the importance of this work is well-understood as we really work to see if there's other resources at Minnesota Housing or if the county has CARES Act resources that will be made available. The HRA wants to be in a position to bring those resources into the city to assist our homeowners.
Councilmember Nelson, I think what I heard was no, but we've got some work to do on it if we want it to be that way. Mr. Verbrugge, can you add anything more to that succinct answer?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, and Councilmembers, HRA Commissioners. I think that is the succinct answer, is no. The question about the strategic priority funds and where we sit with the current economic situation, certainly if the council wishes to wait a little longer here before making a determination, we can do that. Staff has looked at the strategic priority funds and what the likely use of those may be to close some of the funding shortfall and feels that this is still a reasonable request for that fund and is consistent with the purpose of that fund. The other thing that I would say about this program is the council has done a really nice job of trying to balance the interests of homeowners and of rental housing residents, and this is a really successful program for homeowners in our community. And even though there is a challenging economic situation, there are still people within the community who have the means and the interests to be looking at reinvestment in their own properties. And if the strategic priority fund is determined by the council to be in sufficient condition to be able to fund this, I think it is still a reasonable investment for the council to make.
Chair Thorson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to put in a plug for the program as well. I think it's been immensely successful, and I think that, as I look around Bloomington and particularly my neighborhood, whether, when somebody particularly does outside improvements to their home, whether it's landscaping, whether siding, whether it's windows, whether or not they got a loan from us or elsewhere to do it, it's kind of spreads. Other people in the neighborhood start to look at what's being done, and I think one of the important factors of a program like this is sort of plants a seed with everybody and says, gee, that's a nice idea, like what they did with that home, I'd like to do something as well. So I think it's a very useful program just in that it gets, sometimes neighborhoods are getting a little older and maybe not being kept up as well. All it takes is one or two homeowners to make some changes, and it really has a bigger impact than you would think.
Councilmember Lowman?
I don't want to skip over Councilmember Patrick Martin, who had his hand up before.
I apologize. He did indeed. I missed him.
I can hang tight. No worries.
Councilmember Martin and then Councilmember Lowman, please.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Yeah, I share the sentiments about the value of the program. I guess District 4 over here, having some of the oldest single-family housing stock in the city, I know quite a few folks over here who have taken great advantage of it. I guess I'm a little hung up right now. Well, I guess a quick question I'll sneak in here. Without this $300,000 allocation, are we able to continue offering loans off of previous repayments, or is there some volume of loans we'd still be able to issue? Or would those halt pending additional replenishment in that fund?
Mr. Mayor, Chair Thorson, and Councilmember Martin, this would reduce the number of loans that we could complete this program year. We approximately, each loan averages about $24,000, so that'd be about a dozen loans that we could not make if we'd not received that fund this year.
Okay, but there would still be some volume of loans issued off of payments from previous loans, or how does that turn?
Yes, we would continue based on repayments of loans and also the contribution that the HRA has already budgeted.
Got you. Thank you very much. Yeah, if there is still an ability to continue offering loans, even albeit to a reduced degree, I would be hesitant issuing additional funds in this direction, not only for this year, but potentially for 2021 as well. I could be off base with the back of the envelope math, but I think I remember in previous presentations, 1% levy increase equalling in the ballpark of $600,000, and considering the fact that a lot of folks are, as has been mentioned already, kind of hanging on for survival in their homes right now, I think renewal seems like a second-order priority if the program can continue, again, albeit to a lesser extent. So that's just kind of where my head is at.
Councilmember Lowman, then Councilmembers Bologa and Carter.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So when I look at this, I've been a really strong supporter of this strategic priority, and I think that Councilmember Martin really has kind of encapsulated it in terms of what is the impact of this on our budget. So that's kind of the first thing that I kind of look at with this. I'd be interested to hear more of what our HRA Commissioners have to say around this too. One thought that I had was if I could, you know, if we could have this not come out of the general fund or the strategic priorities, and that's kind of another way of saying it's coming out of the general fund, I may be a little more interested in that. I don't know where that would come from, so if there's some creativity, you know, that Councilmember Nelson kind of brought that up, I would be interested in that. I wonder if it makes some sense to hold the decision around this $300,000 fund rehab loan until after we have a really firm grip on what we're going to do with pay year '21 and '22 with the budget. with the budget. And I think, I don't want to just say no to this because if, if that comes back and there's some possibility where we could work it in, I think that I may make some sense. This does fit into our strategic priority around focused renewal, which I'm a big supporter of that. But I did say during our last council meeting that, that I would, you know, want to go ahead and put this priority kind of on the bench so that we can kind of provide some more relief to folks. As I look at that money too, for those folks who may be rehabbing their loans, I wouldn't want to be providing loans to folks. And then there are other folks that we could use these same dollars to support them keeping their houses in Bloomington so that doesn't shift to being a rental type situation for them. So for those, those reasons, I am leaning towards delaying this decision until we kind of need to make it or just delaying it to next year. Just to see what other Commissioners have to say about this or if you have another way of looking at this. But at this point, I don't know how I could support this amount for this year or even for next year too. That's where Martin is with.
Councilmember Beloga.
Thank you. Well, most has already been said about this, but I think we need the data to make a decision. And the data is, is the budget projections for the next couple of years and what the strategic priority fund will look like and what the allocation of those funds in a prioritized manner will be. I think we're, we've all shown great support in, in years past for this funding this rehabilitation loan program. We get a lot of bang for the buck for it. And, but I, you know, I can't support it in a vacuum. So until I see the financial data, I can't support any kind of spending recommendation at this moment.
Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I share the sentiments of the other councilmembers who spoke, but I do have a question. I'm curious to know for the, the requests that you have been getting, you know, what are people asking, you know, what are the requests for? What kinds of things? And I guess I'm curious because it's like, you know, are people asking to replace their air conditioner or their furnace or things like that, that, I mean, are those eligible expenses? And to me, those are things that, you know, if they had help to pay for something like that, it then, but they're, and they're already struggling to pay their mortgage, you know, it could, it could help them cover some of those costs so that they can make their mortgage payment. You know, I'm, I'm trying to think through how it could be right now, a program to help those with houses who are financially strapped but might have like a repair or something that is very costly that they can't afford to, to, to fix at this point. And so if you could provide a little more information on that, that would be helpful.
Mr. Hartman.
Mr. Mayor, Chair Thorson, Councilmember Carter. Yes, all those activities you mentioned are eligible repairs under our rehab loan programs. Our, the primary things that we do under the program are roofing, siding, windows, insulation. We do some HVAC work. We oftentimes replace old furnaces. And we also do a lot of interior work as well. But again, siding, roofing, windows, those types of things that really help improve the exterior look of the house as well, but also really tighten up the envelope and help reduce a family's house, heating costs and energy usage. So those are oftentimes what we see. We also do emergency loans too, through the HRA. We don't do a great number, but if we do experience, if a homeowner experiences an emergency and they do not have the, the wherewithal to complete that on their own, they can come to us for an emergency loan to fix a broken sewer line, things of that nature, furnace in the wintertime.
Okay, that's really helpful. You know, I guess, again, I share the sentiments of my colleagues on council, very supportive of this type of program, but given the financial situation that we are in, I don't, I could not support this at this time. However, I am, you know, if there are opportunities to support people in emergency situations and, and we have some, some money there, I think that that's really a smart use of the funds during this time. But unfortunately, I do, I, again, shared sentiments with my colleagues and I couldn't support this at this moment.
So I think just counting noses, I think we're at the point where we'd like a bit more information from staff. I don't think we're ready to support this at this time and would look for more information. And as Councilmember Beloga said, not ready to make this decision in a vacuum, but rather in the entire context of the next couple of years of budget realities here. So I, is that helpful, Mr. Hartman?
Mr. Mayor, yes, it is. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Olson.
Thank you. Just a quick comment. I appreciate the conversation, would not want to be involved in trying to do the budget in the future year, in near future. Two things. One is that as Councilmember Carter was talking, I'm wondering if the money, what this is for would reduce, I can't remember what Mr. Hartman said, but reducing like 10 of the average 24 grand for a program, but making it more restrictive for those, if the 300,000 isn't added, for those who come forward with the money that we're getting paid back or however that is funding is happening, more restrictive so that it, it ends up taking care of, of needs that are, you know, like a furnace or something like that. And I would just put out there that one of the phenomenon of COVID-19 is that it's, it's really, there's a lot of return on investment for people feeling uplifted. And so I don't know how you figure the return on investment in that way, but it might be that for those loans that are going out, that wouldn't be covered or might be by this 300,000, would, would end up having a nice impact on a neighborhood feeling, you know, more than just a homeowner. Thank you.
Thank you. So as I said, I think the council's consensus is to not support this at this time, but to look for more information. I think, I think without question, everybody supports this program in general. The, the financials are the, the question that we have to answer here as to whether or not this is appropriate at this time, given the, the complete budget picture that we're facing. So I think that is your answer to your request for the $300,000 in strategic fund, priority funds for the rehab loan program. So if we could move on then to the next slide, which is next steps.
Mr. Mayor, Chair Thorson. So next steps, planning will complete an annual housing indicators report. That will be brought back to you. Community development will bring in ordinance changes to the city council for approval. Community development will continue to monitor the COVID-19 and housing stability, emergency rent assistance and those other issues. It will also bring forward, well, we'll bring back more information and will partner with finance to answer the question about the strategic priority funds for the rehab program. The next study session is September 21st, 2020.
Yep. This is, slide is just in here to remind everyone all that we've been through in the past three hours of great discussion. Thank you very much for your feedback. We look forward to revising and adding more data to the Bloomington housing data that we will prepare in, in the housing indicators report. We'll work to clarify our affordable housing goals. We will, you know, continue to work to bring more projects to the pipeline. We will propose language in partnership with legal for, to bring forward to council for opportunity housing ordinance changes. The 90-day tenant protection ordinance will continue to develop our strategies to better connect with both the tenant and property owner communities and will monitor our COVID-19 housing stability resources. And on September 21st, we will be having this conversation extended to include all things housing, the NOAA reporting and preservation strategies, and very importantly, our funding priorities and our Affordable Housing Trust Fund and other public assistance policy. Thank you.
Thank you. We've been chewing this up as we've gone. So I don't know if there are any additional questions. I see Councilmember Nelson.
Sorry, Mayor. I couldn't help it. I do just have, I don't know if they're questions or just thoughts, but in what we're going to do for follow-up, I did not see anything related to efforts we could make to focus on homeownership within our opportunity housing ordinance. And I also just want to have a reminder that I think several councilmembers were very interested in talking more about equity, particularly as it relates to homeownership, but also probably also to housing cost burden and things of that nature. And I want to make sure that those get on to future schedules so that we can start to at least consider solutions to those issues within our community.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Absolutely. Ownership information will be provided as well.
Others with additional thoughts, questions? Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank the HRA staff for everything that they've been working on and that they've been doing. I especially appreciate all of the work that you've done to support people, renters in our community in maintaining their housing and as well as the connections to the mortgage assistance. And so I know it's just a very, it's a hard time for so many people. And I just want to say that I really appreciate all of the work that went into this presentation and all of the, 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 all of your efforts and all of the really good questions and proposals you've put forward. So thank you.
I would agree. Thanks to the HRA for your work with this, the, the HRA staff and the HRA itself. I think thanks to everybody for a very good discussion tonight. This was very in-depth and a lot of great questions and great discussion on, on topics that were pretty wide-ranging and diverse and in-depth. So Chair Thorson, anything to add this evening?
Nothing more.
Nothing more. If there is anything else, now's your last chance. Councilmember Beloga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to follow up on Councilmember Nelson's, I would like to see the creation of a fund, separate and distinct from the Opportunity Housing Fund to encourage homeownership and to use some of the same techniques that we created that Opportunity Housing Trust Fund will. So I know that's a big task and it's not something that staff can generate between now and the next session, but I think it's a big want and I think it has a lot of support both within council and the HRA. So that's, that's my wish for tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember. Well, I'd like to wrap up. I'd like to again, thank the HRA, members of the HRA. Great to see you. Let's not be strangers. Let's get together again very soon. I'd like to thank the staff who did work on this, Ms. Schoquist, Mr. Hartman, Mr. Palermo. Thanks much. Ms. Worthington, thanks for your guidance on all of this. With that, council, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Beloga.
Second, Martin.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Ms. Wilson.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember Coulter.
Aye.
Councilmember Loman.
Aye.
Councilmember Martin.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Beloga.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. City council is adjourned on a 7-0 vote. Chair Thorson.
And I would now look for a motion from HRA to adjourn this meeting.
And Olson, so moves.
Commissioner Lewis, second.
Motion a second. Could we have the roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Huguen.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis.
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you all. And thanks to our elected partners, if you're still with us tonight, for sticking with us. If you have any questions, do not hesitate. Give any or all of us a call. We'll be happy to talk to you about this. Thank you all. You all have a great evening. Thanks much.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye-bye.